Staff members received Outstanding Persons in Education awards from the Michigan Education Association, 15A Union, Courtney Council. TCAP's award winners include Jamie Roster, I believe Jamie's here with us? She's in the back. She is administrative lead at Westwoods Elementary and the TCAP's president. And also with us tonight is Tracy Westerman. Tracy is a behavioral coach as well at, I believe, East Middle School. No, thank you. And so also not with us tonight, our award winners were Jody Mackey, digital media and yearbook teacher at East Middle School as well, so we want to again give all three of them another round of applause. And then we'll have all of you come up here in a little bit here. So our next is the Northwest Education Services Outstanding Educators. Northwest Education Services, Traverse City area chamber of commerce, known as Traverse Connect, and TBA Credit Union have announced the 2024 Outstanding Educator Award recipients, which includes four honorees from TCAPs. The recipients receive the honor for making exemplary contributions to the academic success of students, educational collaboration, and professional development. With us tonight, I believe, is Mary Beth O'Neal, math teacher from Traverse City West Middle School. So we had three others that I don't believe are with us tonight, but if you are, please make sure to stand. Tracy Freeman, lead custodian at Traverse City Central High School. Paige Paul, social studies teacher at Traverse City Central High School. And Kate Hadloff, science teacher at Traverse City West Junior High. Are any of those three with us? If we could give them all a round of applause. Okay, next I will read off our TCAP's Compass Award winners. First is Matt Medler, TCEA mathematics teacher at West Middle School, 25 years at TCAP. Mr. Medler has been teaching mathematics at West Middle School for 25 years. Mathematics is often one of those subjects that students grasp and enjoy or struggle with. Mr. Medler has helped several thousand students push their math thinking to high levels and even convinced those who thought math was their least favorite subject to enjoy their time in his class and find some confidence in their skills. In teaching alongside Mr. Medler professionally for 25 years and knowing him personally for over 30, I've seen his level of commitment and passion for both his profession and students alike. Mr. Medler truly cares for and enjoys working with his students. He fosters a safe learning environment inclusive to all and provides opportunities for all students to reach maximum potential. He has spent most of his career teaching grades six through ninth, meeting the needs of special education students, working collaboratively with co-teachers, and challenging the minds of academically talented students. Over the years, Mr. Medler has diligently served in numerous strategic planning committees while working for TCAPs and volunteered his time chaperoning school-sponsored events, dances, and trips to Washington DC. His professionalism, wit, and sense of humor are infectious. He is a highly effective teacher and above all else has brought his passion and love for math to thousands of students with a sense of humor and storytelling. He has a talent for drawing students into his mathematical learning environment and fosters positive connections and relationships, making all students feel welcome. The number of times parents have shared with me how their child disliked math until they had Mr. Medler has been very moving, almost enough to make me want to go back and sit through a middle school math class. It has been an honor to work alongside him personally in life and professionally for Traverse City area public schools. Next is Neela Barnes, ASME lead custodian at Traverse City High for two years. The curriculum instruction department holds numerous meetings throughout the school year in the Maverick Center at TC High. Neela consistently greets us with a smile and positive spirit and she is always available to help with and set up for our last minute request. She is so efficient and helpful in getting the meeting environment ready for teachers and administrators that are attending the meetings. Again, thank you. Next is Janine Kraus, TCTA bus driver. Janine is always willing to jump in and help whenever and wherever needed. She truly enjoys working with kids. She has taken on a bus route that is challenging and helped those kids on the bus. She truly enjoys her job. Thank you again for doing that. Next is Luke Johnson, TCAA assistant principal at East Middle School, two years at TCAP. Luke is kind, helpful, authentic, and passionate about students. Luke always makes time to talk about students and their needs. He does this with a smile on his face. He has patience and works with his team to solve problems. He motivates students to be the best that they can be. Thanks again, Luke. Next is Tyler Mons, FSEA kitchen lead, East Middle School, three years with TCAP. Tyler has jumped into the kitchen role lead this school year at EMS, is doing a wonderful job. He is friendly, easy to talk to, supports his staff, and gets along well with the hundreds of kids who pass through every day. So again, thanks again. Next is Liz Severs, TCAP's lead administrative assistant at TCAP's Montessori, 21 years with TCAP. I did see the Montessori crew when they came in and they didn't want to trade buildings back. They're pretty happy. And I know Liz is one of them. So Liz is the lead AA at TCAP's Montessori. I've said many times that I had the best job ever because I get to work with Liz. Liz trained me. She has taught me to listen to the students and to hear what is going on underneath what their words are saying. Maybe they are hungry, maybe they need socks. She also balances the budget for the building, handles the time sheets and count day, all with an amazing grace. I have watched Liz put socks on students at 30 feet with grace. Liz treats every student as if they are the most important person she has seen that day. She forgives often and truly leads by example. She helps students pull out teeth and calms the students with broken limbs. What's going on over there? As our staff has been adjusting to the new building, Liz has been instrumental in learning the building and helping staff become acclimated. She even volunteered for the PTO movie night. Liz is professional with staff and is one of the first in the building to notice a student that may be in need of extra support. Liz inspires me every day to be a better employee, to lean in and really listen to what a student is saying to hear that they may not have had breakfast or dinner last night. I have watched Liz find new clothing for students that have soiled them while protecting their dignity. I've watched her notice a student wearing a lightweight coat and go to our lending closet to find warm winter clothes, treating the student with grace and courtesy. Thanks again, Liz. Next is Kelly Walter. Kelly is a part of our non-affiliated administrator staff with curriculum instruction, executive assistant, 14 years at TCAP. Kelly is a very dedicated person, making TCAPs the best it can be. She is very invested in the success of staff and students and is continually trying to keep things running smoothly and enhance support level. Kelly is tireless and dedicated to keeping track of meeting scheduling, supporting executive directors, associate superintendents, principals, superintendent there on occasion, on their quest to achieve this strategic plan. Kelly puts heart into what she does. She is precise in her planning and works hard behind the scenes to ensure that teams and committees have what they need to maximize their meetings and planning times. Whether that be reminders for agendas, securing space, typing up notes for the last meeting, following up with staff, or bringing materials to assist in the brainstorming of newer current ideas, she is always working towards the goal of making TCAPs a better place for students and to learn and achieve when administrators, principals, and teachers have the tools in their PD and meetings to do so. When they are successful, they can better implement the ideas they have come up with and better serve our students. Kelly is proud of TCAPs as an organization. She believes wholeheartedly in what we are as an organization that values students, teachers, and administrators. She will always jump into action when it is needed. She doesn't question, she just asks, "We're lucky to have her working with us." Kelly serves as the heartbeat of our team. She is selfless, behind the scenes, highly efficient force of nature, who prefers to stay out of the spotlight in order to help others shine. She represents the very best in all of us. She lives a life of service and she does so with grace and compassion. It is an absolute privilege to work with Kelly. Not only does she make me better at my job, she reminds me to be a better person at all times. Thanks again, Kelly. And also not with us tonight, Sharon Pietek, non-affiliated support childcare daycare manager, GSRPA at Cortez Elementary School, 14 years at TCAP. Says, "Our extended day staff is also our outside noonday duty staff. They are outstanding, they like kids, and even when managing behavior, treat kids in a kind and respectful manner. Sharon is positive and happy as she comes in and out of school each day. She brings lots of smiles with her. Not only does Sharon do great things during extended day and noon duty, but she is also part of the Cortez community. When we have after-school sporting events going on here, Sharon is often in the stands cheering our kids. She is certainly proud to be a cougar and show her pride in her actions." Give her a round of applause. Okay, so if we could, first, we've got three pictures to take, if we can get our OPIA award winners up here first. All right, thank you. Well, you're all welcome to stay.
So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the budget. Public comment will be accepted, just to make it clear, you can make a comment in the budget hearing as well as a normal public comment if you so wish, but the budget hearing will be specific to the budget as required by law. So as president of the board, I declare this public hearing open to the public. The property tax millage rate proposed to be levered to support the proposed budget will be the subject of this hearing. I found it odd that I might have missed.
Okay, I will pass it off to Christine Thompson.
Thank you. You have received a budget hearing booklet that is available for anybody that would like one. I'm going to start off by going through this book and give a little bit of information about some of the upcoming discussion items as well as far as the amended budget and the upcoming budget. If you go on to tab two, as Scott said, the purpose of this meeting is to certify the taxes. On 2.2, this explains our two taxing rates. So we have our operating millage rate, non-principal residence exemption, that's 18 mils. And then we also have our debt millage rate, that's at 3.1 mils. So that really is the purpose of the hearing, but we also then talk about the amendment for the current year and then the original budget for the next year. So as we get into tab three, that talks specifically about the final amendment to the 2023-2024 budgets. That's general fund budget and special revenue fund budget, which includes food services, community services, and our student school activity fund. For this, there's kind of an overall review on the memo, but then there are subsequent pages that do describe a little bit more detail. So I'm happy to go into detail, but overall, it's about $130,000 change from our last amendment. So we are projecting approximately $30,000 add to our fund balance at the end of this year, and that does take into consideration our typical 1.5 million variance. So before, on our last amendment, we were projecting an add of about $162,000. If we move on to tab four, that does specifically go into the original budget for next year. And on these pages, I get a little bit of information for you, but with the understanding that a lot of these are estimates, we do not have our budget at the time of producing this information for you. We are still hoping to get some information in July, but as you know, by law, we have to adopt a budget by July 1. So as of right now, we are looking at the per pupil increase that the governor has proposed. It's 241 per student. That's kind of middle of the road. The House proposed 217 and the Senate proposed 302. So we went with a conservative, middle-of-the-road estimate. That would change our pupil foundation from 9608 to 9849. Again, these are estimates. As it relates to our student count, currently, we are projecting an overall decrease district-wide of 75 students. Last year, our final count was 8859, and right now, we're estimating 8784. Just so that you're aware, really, we're seeing a little bit more of a decrease at the secondary level. We're looking at about 90 student decrease at the secondary level. And actually, right now, elementary is up even more than we had projected. At the time that we did this, we projected 15 students up, but it's looking more like 30. So we can make those adjustments at the amendment.
And what was it down, if you remember, what was it down the year before?
I believe it's 50.
And again, more, we had increased at the elementary and we have some small secondary classes going through right now. This incoming ninth grade class is a very small class at both high schools.
Yep, okay, there was a slide with it on, so.
There is a historical side in here, yeah.
So it is actually slowing.
It's pretty much stabilized after the large decline in enrollment that we saw, but the good news is we're seeing an increase at the elementary level that will eventually move up to the secondary level. So there's hope that the trajectory has changed.
That was just kind of, I know we've done reviews and I know we've done everything, but I say it to everyone, I just don't understand when I see the new housing, like these subdivisions are now going in in the last year, how it's not going to have a positive impact.
Well, we can always look at some of our numbers as far as population, but we do know that our population is aging, even though the population overall is increasing.
That's kind of the old argument, but then now with these new subdivisions, it seems to be largely family focused. Like you drive through and there's kids and people walking, it's like, so I feel like it is going to change. We will see, and I'm fine, it's not the subject for today.
On the next page, we just provide some information about some history. And so looking at our foundation amounts, we used to go back even further because there was a point in time that our 2015-2016 foundation allowance had finally been restored from some decreases prior to that. And so that was kind of the turning point for us. We've seen increases since then. Right now, we are projecting 9849, but we will see how that holds out when we get our budget. And then as far as student count, you can see some of the history there. So we've been into declining enrollment, but it does appear it over the last three years to kind of slow down.
Can I just point out one thing here too on this slide? If you look at the nine-year trend, the foundation amount has actually increased about 33%, whereas the student count has decreased about 11% over nine years. So, you know, the foundation amount is also just under 50% of our total budget. So I think there are some bigger things for us to have conversations about than just the focus on that foundation amount for why we have such a shortfall this year.
Yeah, that is only one revenue source. And then on the next page, we just share some information, history of fund balance. As you recall, we intentionally added fund balance out of some of our SRR funds, knowing that eventually the federal funds would go away and we may need to look at using some of those to kind of right ourselves, if you will. We'll see how the budget goes and if what we're thinking right now as a draw to fund balance really comes to fruition. And then on the general fund side, I'd just like to share, as it relates to our budget, nearly 88% this year is going directly towards salaries and benefits, which is staff. So we very much are a people organization. And out of $100 million operation, 88% is going towards staff and benefits.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, how does that compare to the past? I mean, we've always heard this about it's been.
Yeah, we've hovered 85-86% for a very long time. So it's a little bit higher, but that makes sense with the influx of some federal funds.
Like one or two percentage points on the benefit side more, with the insurance, for example?
The benefit side hasn't really changed too terribly much as it relates to total cost or the total percentage related to. It fluctuates 1% or 2% just.
You know, I would say that, you know, with some of the things we've done with that of hiring staff, you know, we have, you know, we have a lower class, I guess, historically over the last four years. And, you know, there was even a story that you might have saw, you know, years or so ago with Mackinac Center actually did, we were one of the top districts that actually, with student population decrease and the number of teachers increase. So we did invest in people.
But our administrative staff proportionally went up higher than our teachers.
That's true too.
And then on the other funds, we have special revenue funds, so we have food services. For the budget for next year, we are assuming and have heard already that free breakfast and lunch will continue. And some of the things that we're just looking at is maintaining some cost controls like labor, inventory, and menu planning. That's been a challenge for us, especially this year's, as it relates to supply. Most often, we'll have a menu planned and sometimes what we order isn't necessarily what we get, and so we are making adjustments. But that is something that we're looking at, just for cost controls. We also have, as part of our special revenue fund, our community services, that's made up of childcare programs, which is completely fee-for-service, with the exception of Great Start Readiness Program. We currently are providing service to a little bit over 1,000 students, and that's toddler through fifth grade with our extended daycare programming and summer camps. And then on the LEAP side, participation for a little bit over 5,000 students each year, K-12. We also have our capital projects fund, and we have our debt service fund, and that is directly related to our bond, our borrowing, and investing funds as they come in until payments need to be made. So that's what I have specifically for the hearing. I do just want to give a shout out to my team, especially Wes, Sandy, and Julie. They really are the backbone behind all of this work. I think you guys are aware that we did receive our 19th consecutive award in financial reporting, so that's great news. Certainly does help when we sell bonds and our credit rating helps with interest rates. I will continue, I don't have more presentation, but if you continue in your book and go to tab five, that will begin all of the spreadsheets related to the original proposed 24-25 budget, and that includes general fund and special revenue funds. Really, as you start looking at some of the tabs, it just goes into the changes. So what we try to do is show you a couple of years actual, how we ended with our revenue and our expenses, and then comparison to the 24-25 original. As you know, we are showing a pretty big decrease in revenue. A lot of that is related to some of those federal funds that we had received, specifically SRR dollars. And then typically, our state and federal grants, we don't take into consideration any possible carryover in the original because we haven't actually closed our books and don't know what that will look like. So we'll capture that in our first amendment. Anything specifically as it relates to the budget, the original budget that is proposed, that you'd like to go over?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can you show the FUG 5.4, which is that general fund budget overview? Is that able to be projected to or not?
We don't have that.
I didn't have it as part of the presentation.
So just look at that local unrestricted line, is that the operating millage from homeowners?
That's, yes.
Okay, so that actually went down this year, and I'm just thinking because of our property values, how did that happen?
Well, it's not just, that's not the only local we receive, so it's all of that combined. So it's not just the non-homestead, it's also other local grants that we received. That's not the only item in there.
Okay.
They're all summarized.
And then the state unrestricted, that's obviously the foundation, so that makes sense.
Yeah, the state unrestricted, the difference there really is related to the MIPSers and how they're going to handle the UAAL. I mean, more to come on that, but we'll see what they do, whether they decrease the rate overall and it's a true benefit to us or if it's just adjusting the in and out that we have to do for books, for our books.
And the state restricted, that's categoricals, I presume?
Yes, well, that, yeah, that's categoricals. And a lot of the difference there from the amended to this year is the difference of some carryover that we're anticipating. So right now, in the amended 23-24, that includes any carryover that we had from the previous year, and then also the full allocation of the grant award. And then after we close out our books, we will know how much actually becomes carryover and it will increase our revenue for next year. We won't know that till August.
When the state unrestricted is just the foundation, because the foundation alone is like 86 million, so it's broken down into.
Right, state unrestricted is also some of our categoricals, 31AA at risk.
And some of the foundation is in the local, too?
It is because we actually get local and the state makes up the difference of what we don't get for the full foundation.
The equalization of the foundation.
Yeah.
It's nearly 50%.
Fifty, yeah, okay, because I think the foundation itself is like 86.
Yes, and that is in here.
The state balances that out.
And it balances out.
So that pays foundation, right?
And state appropriated funds, are those one-year funds then or are they multi-year funds?
It depends on the categorical. Most of them are annual, but some of them.
They put in work projects, three-year work projects, sometime the legislature does, that makes it to where it's like a two or three year.
Depends the carryover here, too.
Yes.
And then lastly, the incoming transfers, I was curious what those mean.
So that one is specifically related to that's related to other funds. And so most of that is related to the sale of the Boardman Building and then the print shop work that's being done without the anticipated revenue for the boss. So it's incoming transfer within other funds. And some of that detail is more, is explained a little bit further. There's footnotes available for you, starting on.
Well, she's looking for that. We do have a closing date for Boardman for the 20th, so it will be booked in this year. That we have it.
Sort of, just that we were waiting on the end, our this year's.
No, that's built into it.
It's already, yeah, it's already built in.
It's more of a forgettable special meeting.
No, that's why we added it here, because we were expecting to have it before July 1 in this fiscal year.
Yeah, that was one of the negotiations. So footnotes are more heavily discussed in the amended budget, but on this one, there's footnotes related to special, the special revenue funds. Again, a lot of this is estimated, so we're doing the best we can with what we've heard from the state, from the House, Senate, and the governor's office. I hope you have more information and we'll catch all that in our first amendment, typically in January or February. If you did want to look specifically at our projections for how much of the revenue is local, that's on page 2.2. So we're anticipating 18 mils bringing in 54 million. So it's nearly half of our budget.
So would we go for the non-homestead next time here? It's really important. It's a big chunk. Inversely, a lot of districts, like my former district, I'll be, that's about 25%. It's that much of the second homes and commercial properties that we tax revenue from here. It's that much of the second homes and commercial properties that we've uh taxed revenue from here.
I care about it all the time.
Yeah, but it's a good, I sorry.
Okay. Any other questions uh on numbers?
Yeah, I, I have a question, but I'm trying to think about how to ask it. Um, I guess, so the, the decrease, looking at the um page it's on in here, is that coming out?
Should be at the bottom.
Uh, five point four. So from the twenty-three, twenty-four amended to the twenty-four, twenty-five original budget, revenues have gone down about twelve and a half million dollars. Um, which I believe you said is mostly due to Esser. Expenses have gone down or project, or budgeted to go down nine point six. Um, which I, again, I'm assuming is kind of, not, probably not all, because you're, you're colluding uh steps and um uh contract increases for wages.
Right. But also we've left staff as is without the revenue.
Yeah.
So that doesn't necessarily balance.
I mean, I guess my question is, you know, I'm trying to normalize as like COVID stuff, just normalizing it. We're only at seventy-five percent right of, if I de- um, to decrease br- uh expenses correspondingly to revenue decreases. And I guess it's, it's kind of related to the, the bond letter that was in here too. Um, and then we're not alone, I mean, I've read a lot of articles about just districts in general that had, um, you know, revenues are not keeping pace with just general expenses. You know, so I mean, I, I guess maybe just less, less of a question, more of a comment, um, just that, you know.
Which, which is why, I mean, you know, you guys do always sometimes ask me, you know, um, something to do. We are getting at a critical point with the um unfunded liability, the, the rate for, for the retirement uh system. There's a real debate going on in Lansing right now, I was on a call this, this afternoon. To give you an idea, again, the difference in next year's budget, if we were to get the full realization of that, the, of the, of the unfunded liability is four million dollars next year, right? It would turn our budget into a one million dollar, you know, um surplus, possibly surplus. Or even with, we did calculate a little bit of it in here, but it probably balances us out, right? And so, you know, the, the governor's proposal right now is using that money for other things. Valiant thoughts, but when you have districts even downstate that are laying off, and I related up hundred, like a hundred and eleven teachers. Um, you know, there are districts that are running twenty-six billion or a bit down, down, down in the metro area, I heard today. You know, there, there's, there's a key, you know, battle in Lansing right now with, you know, it's money that twenty-three cents of every dollar, and it's really like thirty-two that's bought down. A payroll, when we're talking eighty-five percent of our money.
Right.
That we spend back twenty-three cents of every dollar back to Lansing and dropping that down, you know, like thirteen cents of every dollar? It, you know, it's huge.
And is that, is, that's embedded in one of these lines, right? That's not separately listed, our.
That, it's built in.
It's built in and it's left as is, not knowing how they're gonna handle the excess revenue.
Yep, so if you do happen to talk to legislators or a letter in the next week, you know, if the governor wants to do, you know, universal preschool and wants to do college, community college for all, valiant things, but I'm worried on the backs of our kids in, in pre-K-12 right now. You know, of doing that is, we just don't think an answer that's there when there is an opportunity to be able to put this. And this is a, this is a long-term thing, right? Every year now, you know, that there's that money that would be saved that we would have to be able to put in classrooms. And, you know, obviously, when, when we're a people organization, it's a big one. So know that your, your conversation right there, that it, it's possible to do right now. If, you know, if what all of the other organizations have asked the, the legislature and governor to do is there.
Yeah, and I mean, I think when you look back at where our fund balance was, I mean, we're not even, even worst case, and which I'm assuming this is kind of worst case scenario. Yeah, I mean, we're still.
Yes.
Where we were nineteen, eighteen, nineteen twenties fund balance.
Yeah, I, you know.
I don't know what that percent, I mean, I don't have those numbers back, back then.
Yeah, we're still protecting over ten percent.
And, you know, and, and hopefully the legislature comes through and we get a balanced budget, we're right where we should be coming out of COVID. If not, you know, next year, but even as we go through this year, there's gonna be some tough conversations that would have to be had. But, you know, with such influx and a possibility, you know, collectively, you know, the direction I've been given from the board is, you know, keep our coaches, keep our, you know, behavior folks that are helping in those elements, keep those things. And then if so be it, we have to later on down the road next year, but this is why we have fund balance. And again, the picture's not painted yet in Lansing that could come out to a balanced budget, I think, in this aspect. And it wouldn't surprise me at all for that to happen, but we'll see.
From a high level perspective, just to um give you some numbers, uh just to roll our current um employees with the salary increases that are built into contracts is two point two million. The increase from the uh foundational allowance alone is only one point four.
And that two point two million, what percentage increase was that?
Two.
Average of two, we have different.
Yeah, annual increase to the salary.
Okay, I was just gonna make a suggestion for when we, you know, have the next presentation for an amendment on the page four point five, where you have the fiscal year and the fund balance history.
Mm-hmm.
If you could add a column for the percentage of the final budget, then that would really help us see.
Yeah, it's hard with the fund balance because we've been propped up so much with um federal resources. It obviously, it obviously goes off your total expenses. So the more expenses, obviously, the lower the percentage. And so I like to give the amount, but sure, I can add the.
We could, we could even come up with a method to.
Well, and it would help normalize, normalize pre-CO, you know, those, especially those pre-CO.
Yep.
Cause we were under ten thou- ten percent prior, prior to twenty twenty and then.
Yeah, but with a much smaller budget number, you know, uh overall, you know, overall.
Right, but that would just enhance the transparency of where we are. I, I mean, it looks like this year with this original budget, we're, we'd be looking at eight point nine percent.
That, and that's taking, that doesn't take into consideration the one point five million dollar variance. So that's just your raw numbers. And so if we do, as we have for the past probably fifteen years gotten that variance, it'd be ten point four percent.
I guess that's my, I'm a, I don't like it going anywhere near ten, but I'm okay to do it now, based off of numbers that are somewhat made up.
Yep.
And the fact that we have to let these, some of these things play through, not your numbers, the state's numbers, yeah.
Well, and I think we.
The state side, but, but, but the state has yet to give us a number to make our head to, to do our.
Really hard with a four million dollar variance possibility, you know?
Yeah, that's what I mean, well, we're, we're not, we ain't talking about a four million variance of things that they're talking about.
So we went conservative and.
Well, we, and we made prudent choices two years ago, over the last couple of years, knowing that this wasn't possible.
We wanted a softening here to be able to figure out where things land.
Yes, I'm a, I am a guy, but then if this, I think, what we've heard from the board previously is, you know, I, I hate to see the fund balance go down too quickly when we're still going to recession, we're looking.
So if we get a year, then this is it, you know, and then I, you know, I fully expect, you know, that if things don't get better in Lansing, like I'm hoping and praying they will, and I think they will, then we'll have some pretty tough conversations for the next years to keep a fund balance where the board wants it.
Yeah, but at least it's not as tough as many districts currently face, where, where there isn't a fund balance and uh they still wanna make decisions.
As part of your, your budget process from the administration, did you all look at some options, knowing how bad this, you're really like.
We did, so you might remember at least one spot in my office we eliminated. You know, we are continually looking at spots, you know, consistently with that way. But we've kept it as far as the way we can from classroom and teachers and kids and buildings and those are parts they need.
But we've added a lot to behavioral.
We have.
Support.
We have, and in buildings.
Added a lot there.
Yep, agreed. Which our principals will tell you is just drastically needed, you had the chance to see the presentation.
Some of that was grant funded, right? Some of that was grant funded.
Little bit, but about fifty percent we're paying for the, with our partnership with N M C A A, we're paying fifty percent, they're paying fifty percent.
Yeah, I, so I, I remember in past years, and maybe I'm thinking of a different packet, but we got like building by building, student enrollment numbers.
That's later on, after, that's after we get through audit and coming.
I was gonna say, because that would be helpful too, I think, just to see like number of FTEs and, and students and see these trends over time, like that would help us really understand.
Yep, and, and you do see that in the audit book that's similar to this, but it's the audit book that you'll see in.
November.
November.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and again, I, when I said my comment, I was specifically talking about the fact that the government has yet to tell us the income side of students, not your work.
I get it.
And won't know for at least three weeks right now. They do not even have targets set yet, and we don't think they will by till the end, end of the week, if that, that's early.
Say, they say they only got two more weeks left, right?
Yes.
Should we seem to have lost a week somewhere, rounding it down? Okay, any other questions? All right, so um if there is any other questions from the board, uh at this time, the board would like to invite public comment. Um, specific to the budget, is there anyone who would like to provide public comments on the budget? Okay, hearing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. Um, and then we can move on to regular public comment. There's public comment cards, I believe. So this board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make any personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including the complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy zero one six seven dot three, Stacy?
Kathleen Guy.
Good evening all.
Good evening all.
Is this mine? Maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good.
You can hear me at least. Um, wanna thank Dr. Van Wagner for coming to meet with a group of us citizens about ten days ago. I think it was the eve of T C High's graduation and then the weekend full of graduations, so. But he came out to visit us in Acme Township and we really appreciated that. This regards Birth of Us. So I remember walking my daughters into school for their first day at Birth of Us, that was back in nineteen eighty-seven. My daughter Lindsay was in first grade and daughter Emily was in kindergarten. We had just built our forever home in Acme Township and this was our community school. We had excellent teachers, a great group of parents, an energized PTO and a lot of school activities and community events that were hosted at the school. We also had the unique distinction of being the only TCAP school with an ice rink and a warming hut and a sliding hill. It was really big stuff, because it was not only great for the kids at recess time, but it was great for families on the weekends, which was a real gathering place for all of us. So fast forward to twenty sixteen, when Birth of Us was closed. Our community school became vacant and made us long for those wonderful days when it was the center of so much activity in Acme Township. So I'm here as a member of a core group of citizen change makers who hope to acquire the BV property and keep it public by creating an outdoor park for recreational activities and perhaps a future community center. Now, this is not a redo of the Acme Township conversations that you've had. Um, instead, our goals are to invest in the well-being, cohesion and vitality of the entire Acme Township community by providing access to recreational fields, rinks and hills. We'll encourage physical activity, bring this parcel alive again, contribute to our community identity and sense of place and repurpose a much-loved location for residents of all ages. Our planning is in motion, but we need time to save the Birth of Us property from becoming something that would not be good for all who live in Acme Township to something that we believe will be good. I'm here tonight to seek your consideration of time as we develop our plan to make the Birth of Us property something of which we can all be proud. This could be a win for TCAPS and certainly a win for the Acme Township community. Thank you.
Holding me back. Salatheo, uh Five Mile Road in Acme, lifelong member of the Acme Township community. Um, I was the first class that attended the brand new Birth of Us school. We were, I remember it clearly, moving into this brand new building. And then, um, unfortunately, my grandkids were the last class to be at Birth of Us and that was a much sadder occasion. Um, I guess we're coming before you because we care deeply about the community. And I have rec plans going back, oh gosh, uh from the beginning, nineteen seventy-nine. And what we talked about back then and in every single recreation plan was having a, a, a place that we could call Acme. A place for uh picnics, baseball games, sliding hills. Um, this is the last parcel of land that's really left in the core of Acme Township. Uh, right now, Acme is thirty-one and seventy-two, there's no place called Acme, really. Uh, so I'm just um asking, I guess, that you consider just waiting a little bit. I, we don't have a comprehensive plan to bring before you right now. Um, but we have a very committed core group of people that really care about Acme and wanna see this happen. And I just would appreciate your consideration of maybe giving us a, a little time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben Lane.
Good evening, can you all hear me okay? Okay, like I say, Josie Scott, thank you so much, I could hear you well. And maybe it's just that I'm old, but I think I've probably missed half of what's been said. I don't know if most of the folk out here could hear as well. John, you've got a great, deep baritone voice, I hope you're in a choir somewhere. Couldn't understand everything you're saying, but I love the tone on there anyways. Number one, I'd like to suggest microphones so that we could hear, or maybe I just need to hear names, I don't know. Uh, what I'd like to speak at, just real quickly, I hadn't even planned on speaking this evening, was on nine B of your consent items. Under curriculum, the middle school math purchases for the CPM education program. I'm a retired administrator and educator from Sacramento, California, and the Thomas Unified School District moved out here seven years ago. I want you to know, I was instrumental in getting CPM removed from our district. Uh, let me tell you why, students and parents complained so much about it. They said there was too few examples, uh they'd go home and the parents were furious, they go, we can't help our kids, we don't know how to do this kind of stuff. Uh, it wasn't sequential, um, it was the highest level of frustration in any subject that I had seen in my almost thirty years of education. We had two teachers who were instrumental in, in putting forth the program, and so they were for it, uh but they were in the minority. I'm just curious, if you personally looked at the CPM material? Um, if you haven't, I implore you, don't be a rubber stamp board, look at that material, uh do your due diligence. Perhaps it's changed over the, uh, I've been retired now seven years, uh since I've seen, last seen it. But CPM was killing our kids, we had an eighty percent failure rate with that. Uh, my wife, Janine, didn't wanna speak tonight anyway, she was administrative uh assistant in the school district and curriculum instruction. And received so many complaints from parents and students about that kind of material. Um, it's, it's for global thinkers, no doubt about it, it's not concrete sequential. I'd say look at some, look at some other options, see what else is out there. Maybe not Saxon, which is drill and kill, which I know the teachers aren't real excited about there, but there has to be something better than, than what CPM has to offer. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
And Kate Burwinkle.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, boarding community, I am Kate Burwinkle, the proud principal at Long Lake Elementary. And I wanted to speak briefly tonight to say a few words of support on behalf of our association group, T C A A, for the upcoming bond on the ballot in August. Our association group is in full support of this bond because it's a crucial step in ensuring all students have access to safe, comfortable and conducive learning environments. The proposed improvements are essential upgrades across all of our school buildings. I can speak on my building in particular, which is considered one of the newer schools in the district. We have outgrown our space at Long Lake and are currently utilizing every nook and cranny in the building. We have staff members running intervention groups and copy rooms, we have staff doubling up in offices because there isn't anywhere else to go. We were a part of a potential expansion at the last bond, but then population changed a bit and tho- those funds were used in another elementary building. So our population continues to grow in our building and there is a need to expand in future. So our population continues to grow in our building and there is a need to expand in future years. The bond proposal includes a potential expansion at my school building. Additionally, other buildings not considered as new need more crucial upgrades, including heating systems, roof replacements, and ensuring ADA compliance. This bond also takes into great consideration Central Grade School and the need for renovation. I actually have a personal experience with that as well. I grew up in Cincinnati and my elementary school is over a hundred years old as well. They actually have scaffolding around the outside of the building because the bricks are falling off. They didn't pass several levies, which is what the funding is in Cincinnati, and therefore they're struggling right now to be able to keep the building open. We don't want that to happen. This bond also is important because we're preparing our students for future and we see great enhancement possibilities through STEM, music, and other areas, comprehensive supports through technology. These are just a few of the integral needs. This bond is about investing in the future of our children and our community. Our district has been extremely responsible with spending. So by supporting this bond, we're committing to providing our students with the best possible education for future years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of TCAA in support of this bond. Thank you again.
Thanks everyone for public comment. And as far as sound, this is our first board meeting in this building, so there will be some, we will be working on some improvements to that.
But we will all do our best to project and articulate.
Project.
I had, I didn't know there was any amplification, so I just figured I was talking loud, so I was going for it. Alright, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, deferring superintendent's report. Defering to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so lots tonight to talk about. First, I'll talk the legislative update. So we've had the chance to talk quite a bit. Budget-wise, we're in the, you know, the waning weeks here of negotiations and what's happening with that in Lansing. And you've seen the budget, our best educated thoughts on what that's going to look like, but there's very diverse thought between the three branches of government right now. And once we know that, you know, we'll, we'll keep you informed on where that goes. They have a self-imposed deadline of July one, so hopefully they meet that. And we'll keep you updated as that goes through. There's also some work that's going on still with a dyslexia bill that is still going through a lot of conversation on what that looks like. Lots, lots of debate of, you know, the type and the frequency of screeners for that for students. And so that is continuing to have a lot of conversation in Lansing. And so we'll continue to keep you updated on that as well. Some district highlights that we have. Our Sunshine Bus for Summer Food Service, the TCAP Sunshine Bus, will be rolling throughout the district, providing free food provided by the Father Fred Foundation and basic needs provided by the TCAP Student Support Network. Look for the TCAP School Bus making stops at various locations three times a week from June twelfth to August thirty-first. There's no service the week of the fourth. The bus provides food and basic needs for all children eighteen and under. Routes and details and information is available on our district website. Congratulations to our Assistant Director of Technology, Winnie Bell, for meeting the requirements to obtain a Chief Technology Officer certification under the Michigan School Business Officials Voluntary Certification Program. So congratulations to Winnie. The fifth annual Great Titan Trojan Read Contest that pits each grade level, including staff, against one another was short and sweet this year at both middle schools. In just four short weeks, nearly five hundred book tickets were collectively submitted by a hundred and seventy-eight participants. In the end, it was the seventh grade, class of twenty-twenty-nine, that prevailed at each campus. TCAPS is continuing open interviews. If you're passionate about education and community, we want to meet you. Join us for open interviews on Wednesday, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from three to five PM at the TCAP's administration offices at Glen Loomis. That's one thousand nine South Oak Street in Traverse City. So I also have some friends to help me out here with a few additional pieces of information. So I'm actually going to start with Ginger to talk about our school support network. In our finance committee, we had a presentation and the finance committee wanted the conversation to happen collectively with the board. Or was it financial? Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. And, and so I asked Ginger to come and give you that same information to be able to, to be able to hear that and also for our community to be able to hear the numbers. So Ginger?
Thank you. So every year, we try to do a roundup of numbers just to try to keep a close eye on any changes that may indicate a trend in the number of students that be serviced through our Student Support Network along with our McKinney Vento, which is our homeless funding that we receive federal grant funding for. So just to highlight, we did refill seven hundred and sixteen individual student requests through the Student Support Network this past year. That does not include the requests for numerous classroom needs, including school supplies and a ton of snacks. Snacks is a huge request that we try to consistently refill on for all of the school buildings. And specific to our McKinney Vento population, it's, it's just an interesting way to see the, the trending increase in our area. Four percent of all TCAP students are now eligible for McKinney Vento. The last number provided by the state was two percent. So we are actual, actually double the, the state norm for number of students eligible for service there.
And again, McKinney Vento eligibility is?
Considered students who have no consistent nighttime residence. So they are considered homeless, but the homeless definition could include students who are maybe couch surfing or doubled up with another family. Not necessarily just those living in the pines, but it does also include families in situations like that or those living in their cars. So in total, we have four hundred and twenty-six students eligible during this past academic year. That number does go ebb and flow a little bit based on when families will or will not have housing. So it's kind of a up and down scale. On the last day of school, we were at three hundred and fifty-one students, but the four hundred and twenty-six were the number total, total served through the year. Of that, we did have sixty-two students who were unaccompanied homeless youth. And what that indicates is that they were homeless without a parent or guardian. So they were unaccompanied and therefore most of those students would be considered those either living in tents or couch surfing. We had twenty students enrolled in our Great Start Readiness Program, which is our youngest students serviced at all of our TCAP's buildings that offer that program or McKinney Vento. Of that population, we are happy to report that thirty of them did graduate this year. So that was a point of highlight to, to want to share with you. For those who do have the McKinney Vento residents that I've mentioned as being unsheltered or living in transition in one way, we do have the ability to break that down. So of the numbers that I shared with you, eighty-eight were considered unsheltered. Twenty-three lived in a shelter. Twenty-seven had some form of transitional living option. Sixteen lived in either a hotel or motel. And two hundred and seventy-two of those students were doubled up, meaning that they were likely couch surfing. So that's what the total brings us to four hundred and twenty-six. For fundraising, it was critical. We did have the Student Support Network raise twenty-three thousand dollars along with McKinney Vento fundraising to help with many of the needs for funding for food and clothing. And we couldn't have done that without many of the local partners and private donors. And with the upcoming conclusion of that art funding, we are going to rely even more so on all of these important events within our community to try to maintain the current level of service, especially knowing that the number of students is continuing to climb. We are also looking to try to find out-of-the-box opportunities for housing. And one, right now, we have Haley McDonald, who is our Student Support Specialist at West Senior High and Central High School. She did help a couple of students find summer employment on Mackinac Island because of the fact that it provides housing. So we're trying to look for opportunities for students to find ways to find a job that does include housing. So along with that, I just want to say, you know, our SSN team is completely dedicated to this cause led by Katie Kubash. And our partnership within the community is, is bar none, just so impressive. And we are beyond grateful for all of the help. And we do have a great partnership with the local QRT, which is the Quick Response Team, which does work with a lot of individuals who are facing some trouble with the law or, and may have children in our school system. And so a lot of these types of new partnerships are really going to help us try to better service the students that are most vulnerable within TCAPS. So I just wanted to provide that update, let you know that we're going to continue to do everything we can to, to service as many students as, as needed and hopefully find new innovative ways to find funding for future years.
Ginger, any questions? I just, we asked for it to be put on the full board agenda because things often get lost in exact. I don't think we've ever heard a more impactful and important thing to, yeah, just having those sixty-two unaccompanied homeless youth was a shocking number to me. And the fact that, which I'm not discounting because I know some donors have given money myself, but with twenty thousand or twenty-two thousand seven hundred, if you include McKinney Vento, is a disturbingly low amount of money. I think our community, if they hear those numbers, we should be able to come up with a better way.
Yeah. Thank you all for the good discussion, the executive, and for putting us on the full agenda. I just wanted to ask, in terms of the McKinney Vento Act, does, so does that, can you just briefly describe, how does the funding work from the state? For, how does that work?
It's federal funding.
Oh, it's federal, okay.
Yeah. And so that is numbers that are provided through our student support or student information system.
So like, they base it on any number of students, regardless of whether they need the help for the whole year or just a subset of time? And then it's like basically applied to the next school year? How does that work?
Do you know, I don't know the timing of it.
Yeah, the problem with the federal funding is there's no, not really a good per pupil allocation. We have a lump sum that is not nearly enough to service the students that we have. And we're in a consortium, so we provide services outside at TCAPS as well. And Katie is the director of the consortium. So the funding unfortunately has been declining over the last decade. And so the communications team has been very creative in creating the Student Support Network and getting some other local resources and partnerships throughout Traverse City to help support that. But unfortunately, it's just not, it's not a great allocation. It's not per pupil. They do take our information as it relates to the students that we do count in our student information system, but I don't think that any increase or decrease really affects the allocation.
I have a question because I know that, for example, Goodwill's policy has changed recently. Now they've moved from housing people that come in on a, on a list to moving people, going first to people who are chronically unhoused for a year. So they started a year of chronic houselessness. And so this concerns me about these students. Are there other ways that the community can participate in helping to provide care for these students?
That's a great question. One thing that the community should really be aware of is that we relied heavily on Pete's Place. And Pete's Place was a shelter for students. They housed students who were unaccompanied, beginning at the age of twelve. And recently, that program has dissolved. And we no longer have a shelter for students. The nighttime shelter that we have in town is for those over the age of eighteen. So the answer that we were provided was that they were going to do some type of creative fostering type option. However, there have not been families that are looking to be in these temporary situations with children who are unaccompanied. And it is not part of the foster system. So therefore, we do have a huge hole in our community and that's we provide overnight housing for anyone over eighteen and we have nothing for those who are under eighteen. So I would say if there's something our community can do, I would say that that is definitely a conversation that needs to be addressed.
Can you just read out the website where people can donate?
Sure. If you go to TCAPS.net, it is, let me double shot, it's a backslash. Say it, and then, and then I don't want to get it wrong.
So yeah, again, I mean, this technically is not a s- school issue, but clearly part of our guidance is to rate, is to get people to be, oh, it's, it is actually TCAPS.net backslash SSN, so. Yeah, we can. Thank you. Where do you get that? Just have it.
I gave it a chance, what I gave you there to, when you walk in the door now, there's a stack of them right there.
Oh, nice.
Alright, so I, I, just real quick, Ginger, thank you so much for all that you do for this. I know you mentioned the QRT. Are there other, other community groups that you guys work with? I'm assuming there are some out there. I'm, I'm aware of, you know, a couple of different grants that are available for programs like this in the community. I mean, I know we have a very generous community.
Absolutely. Yeah, we do. We have amazing local partnerships with, with many places around the five county region and more specifically within our own district to assist us, you know. And we've done like a couple of events each year with Hagerty, you know. Got all different fundraisers that we've done through like our basketball games and our hockey games and.
Horse shows we did.
Horse shows, yes. And then VC pizzas.
Two percent grant through the Grand Traverse Band of Auto and Chippewa.
Yes. The, the two percent grant is what has funded our Sunshine Bus, now going into its second year. And I mean, last summer alone, we donated over three thousand bags of food. And that, each bag of food would provide each child with, you know, multiple meals, multiple snacks per week. So. And we've had, you know, success with many of the local appliance stores. You know, we now have washers and dryers and carrying closets in all of our buildings so that students can get a fresh change of clothes and we can wash all of their clothing right there at the school so the next day they have it fresh again. So holiday giving, you know, we served forty families last year, not even including those that were done at the building level, but it was just in addition to or to try to fill in the requests that were made at each building. So, you know, we continue to, to do what we can. We did have a new event this year called the Pop-Up Shop, which was held during spring break. And we allowed families to come in and shop for free and just kind of gave those students who were probably not doing anything exciting during the week of spring break, an opportunity to come in and take all the goodies they wanted, you know, including some personal hygiene items and so just, we, to service forty-five families through that. And they were just so grateful. So we do. So we do plan to host that again this upcoming fall. And I can't not mention the Father Fred Foundation. They have been absolutely a lifesaver for our community. And they are the ones that bag all of the food for our Sunshine Bus. And they also help in providing the blessings in a backpack throughout the school year. So just a huge shout out to them and Rotary Charities and the Community Foundation. I mean, the list goes on and on and it's, it's a, it's a giving community that we are a part of and, and I'm grateful. We just unfortunately need more.
Step Up Northern Michigan is also another, does a lot of food, a lot of TC High, you know, want to make sure that they belong, been helping as well. So we do have a lot of partners, but the need is great.
Very sobering, thank you.
Okay.
Ask a quick question.
Yes.
In your legislative update, has the legislature come up with a definition, a clear definition of dyslexia yet?
No. Yeah, it's, it's all being, you know, the clear definition, the clear screeners that should be used. There's a debate, you know, there's Horton Gillingham, there's, you know, so there's just a lot of different conversations. How often, at one point, it was a mandate to screen every child three times a year. That there's just not the professionals to even be able to remotely do across the state. Then I heard it was down to one, then I heard it was at the request of the parents. And so it's, you know, it's a, it's been, it's been in conversation within the committees of the legislature for a while. And I expect it's still going to be a bit. But, you know, I do, I want to be very careful to recognize that, you know, as educators, we recognize the need for support. You know, there's absolutely a need for support out there. We just want to make sure that there's an implementation plan that is thought out well and works versus just putting something out there that there's not the capacity to even do. And then you have a whole lot of upset people because the implementation plan didn't work. So we're trying to have real thoughtful conversation, bring all the right people into the room with parents, professionals, and talk about this, a long-term strategy to be able to provide those supports the way they should be. Okay, okay, next is a conversation with board members. We've had into the books now a year of our cellphone policy for our schools. So this evening, I asked for administrators from our secondary buildings here. So from our high school buildings, I believe, Jesse Houghton is here, as well as Andy Ware, Assistant Principal at West High School. And then we also have Kristin Studeman, Principal at West Middle School. And Dan Tiesworth, I believe, is here, Principal of East Middle School. And so they're going to, they provided some data of their year of going through the policy. And so they're going to come up and talk a little bit about that data they provided to you. I think thoughts on how the year went, lessons learned, thoughts. And so I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to them to come up and have conversation with that.
Well, I think the, the story of the middle school is that it was an overwhelming success. When we were in the initial planning phases, I have to be honest, I wasn't sure how this was going to be received by our middle school students. They have stepped up in a tremendous way and really have bought into the policy. As you can see from the staff feedback, really, I think what they would like for us to say is thank you. When we began the conversation with them about how this was going, they kept saying, you know, they're not going to change it. We're not going to go back, are we? They were fearful that we would go back to a less clear policy. I think that just having the support from the board, having the administrative response and kind of that stepwise progressive, you know, what happens if there's a first violation, a second, and a third, not only supported and made it clear for students for what was expected, but it really helped our response as well as administrators. And it helped teachers to know that they had the support if they did have an issue with a student with a cellphone violation. So overwhelmingly positive feedback from our staff. I feel that our sixth graders in particular, who have known no other policy but away for the day, they really bought in. And our seventh and eighth graders, who this was new, this was a shift for them, they too did a really nice job with it. So nothing but positive feedback all around from the staff that we had talked to at West Middle School.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Kristin said, you know, getting in front of it last summer, I think, was key also. So I do appreciate the work the board did on that in July. So we were able to get proper communication out to students and families. We front-loaded it a ton going into the school year. We thought there'd definitely be like an influx early on of having to run phones down or several phones out in the hallway cafeteria. How are we going to patrol it outside? And we didn't see any of that. So we were very happy with how the plan kind of rolled out. Always some exceptions there, as you can see in the data, we kind of outlined each grade level and any cellphone violations that we had. A few students ended up on a cellphone plan. A lot of those plans were just turning the phone in at beginning of the day and getting them at the end of the day. Most of those situations were kids that needed them, maybe not a lot of home support to take the phone away initially or at all. And that's why we wanted them to have it as far as any after-school transportation they might have. So the, the turn-in worked very well. And then some data that came back as far as when we surveyed teachers, one thing that we talked about was disruption of learning environment. And then also, we looked at how that social interaction increased between students and if teachers saw more social interaction because kids didn't have their phones out, especially in middle school last year. In the twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, in the twenty-two, twenty-three was they could have it out during passing time. So the teachers did report that they did see much more social interactions as the day went on. And probably the most impactful aspect that Kristin and I talk about quite often is how, just a much more powerful and positive climate within the middle school, not dealing with drama or bullying or harassment during the school day with phones. We dealt with a ton of phone issues the previous year that came up with kids maybe going to a bathroom or between classes that we have some issue or we have to chase down some screenshots. That decreased substantially this year as far as any interactions we had with phone. And that's outside of school also, so involving law enforcement, school threats. We had a decrease of that, I believe. It was just an overall super positive experience.
You want to do questions or come back after?
We, I think it'd probably be easier to do the middle, yeah.
Middle school first, that's fine, your pleasure.
Yeah, let's do the middle, we'll finish up any questions on the middle school side, please switch back.
You're back.
I got the other way, no, okay. Um, so is there any, I'm, I was shocked at how positive, yeah, these numbers were. You rarely see, I mean, on anything, ninety percent.
And how positive the comments were.
Yeah, I was looking for the bad ones, I was like, is this like...
I mean, I guess, I'll say, I, I actually wasn't shocked, I, this is exactly what I expected to see. So, I mean, I think this is what all the literature said when we were trying to implement this last year. So, I mean, I'm, I'm actually not, not surprised, I was, I was expecting to see this.
The one question I have though is when we were initially doing the discussion, I thought we were doing away for the day, outside, not visible at all, leave them at home. And I think that it translated instead in practice to you could bring it in your backpack. And there were some, leave it in your backpack, and there were some comments from the staff saying that, yeah, it could be a little bit disruptive in some of the rooms if some of the kids were bringing their phones in their backpacks. And I was wondering, do we need to, would it be useful to tighten it up just a little bit and be even stronger and just try and leave your cellphone at home?
Yeah, I think...
...a little bit about turned off in lockers, turned off in backpacks, and I think board policy fell on that the phones are turned off in the backpack. Some of the feedback we got last year...
Majority of apprehension was around safety, where they go to worst case scenario that if there is a school safety issue, how is my child going to be able to get a hold of me in a timely fashion? So that's where we fell on, is turned off in their backpack and it's worked fairly well from what we've seen. As far as phones going off in backpacks, we don't see that. I haven't seen it this year at all, so as far as that disruption goes.
I think, Beth, we did talk about it, I think we came down to the allowing in backpack because it was like, we wanted to have a policy that we could reasonably enforce. And we figured that that would be too easy, that everyone would just do it, and we wanted to make it.
We did talk about athletics after school as well for them to be able to contact, cover phone phones, all that stuff like that.
And the reason we didn't say lockers was because we don't have lockers consistently across all the schools. And I understand that. But, you know, I was seeing a lot of comments supporting no cellphones next year. I mean, just reading it off the thing. So, yeah, or the other, one person suggests, you know, have your students place it in a pocket like they do at the high school, the middle school. I don't know if that would work as well.
I, I don't know what policy could work better than what we're doing right now. I mean, I, I think there, there were a few comments there. Kristin and I can kind of combine that survey, so that's all middle school teachers, where we got about a hundred responses, so. I can see the policy naturally being more effective based on what Kristin said about, you know, those eighth graders moving out of the school, who had to deal with several policies in sixth and seventh grade. The policy actually changed on them twice, and then the eighth grade was away for the day. So our sixth grade numbers were our lowest, obviously they have the least access to phones, we realize that. But also, we hope now that we have it kind of ingrained, they understand the expectation, that we'll see it real super smooth for the next three years.
Yeah, I guess I would ask maybe a question, and obviously, I think you'd, you'd agree that any policy that we have is just as good as, as it is consistently enforced. You know, I mean, if it's, if it's enforced today but not enforced tomorrow, it's not really a policy. So I mean, I guess, you know, would you, anything that you would change? It doesn't sound like you have any suggestions or things that would maybe make it better? You know, or do you think it's just a matter of, you know, more ingrained as years go by that, that you'll have fewer, I mean, there's always going to be people that try to violate the policy, but I mean, do you, you know, think that there will be fewer as we go on in time?
I do. I, I also think next year, you know, we're looking at how we can be proactive in our expectations and teaching our students those expectations right out of the gate, how we can continue to revisit that.
So just communicating, at the beginning of the year, the, what happens with each violation, what the expectation is. I think that if we improve that at least, you know, speaking for West Middle School, I think that will help. And I think just staying the course. I think that we've created a doable policy. I think that it's something that it, it, at the end of the day, it reaches that goal, what the board wanted, which is having the phones away so that students can focus on academics, social emotional wellness, and then also that mental health component. And we're also going to front-load that understanding for students that they, that they see why we're asking the phones to be away because we truly believe that it benefits them on a, on a number of levels. So I, I think staying the course, I think maintaining that consistency between the middle schools and supporting our teachers with what they're doing in the classroom. I think all of those things come together to just help us get better over time.
I really appreciate just the feedback and the comments included. It's really nice to hear firsthand from those that are there every day. So, you know, sometimes as a board, we pass things and we don't really know how it affects your day-to-day. So I really appreciate that, and it really sounds like it's working and is appreciated by staff, so. Yeah, and parents and probably kids too, they don't realize it, but...
I've, I've heard some kids say very positive things actually about the cellphone policy.
I've actually heard a couple of kids have actually told me specifically that they actually think it's a lot less drama.
Yeah, yeah.
Middle, middle school or high school?
Oh, middle.
Both, 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 right.
So I wanted to ask, because thank you so much for putting together these numbers for us, the pie charts and all the testimonial evidence. I know that was, had to be a lot of work to, for you and your staff, so we appreciate the time you put into this. I just wanted to clarify, so for the, where is the cellphone student data and staff feedback? And you have the one, over one hundred responses for the pie charts? Was this students or staff or both?
Staff.
Staff, okay.
That was a staff survey that we put out.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then seventy-eight permits.
Yes, yes, that was combined with West Middle School.
Okay, so the over one hundred responses, approximately how many staff do you have at West and East combined?
Hundred fifty, hundred sixty, seven around there. So a pretty good chunk with, with overwhelmingly positive responses, you know, some suggestions for improvement.
For improvement.
Yeah, and the same thing with the, the open-ended questions about the feedback, was that all staff? That was just staff, okay. So there were a few, you know, constructive comments in here, if you will. I mean, by and large, it was extremely positive, like people said, and I have to say as a board member, it is extremely gratifying to know that we did, you know...
We got something.
Yes, exactly, you know, best move ever, you know? Best thing you have ever done as a board, you know, like very powerful. But a couple of things that I did just want to follow up on, I mean, others kind of touched on them is like where, you know, at least a few people said we need more consistency or enforcement unilaterally from classrooms to principals' offices. Anything less makes it a hassle for those trying to simply uphold board policy. What do you plan to do to address this, those perceptions that there is inconsistency?
I would say the first week, Kristen and I will run PBIS lessons, so I think starting with students and expectations. We have the envelope system, teachers have the envelopes, they know how to use them. We don't engage in that power struggle and any type of electronic, as I thought they shouldn't have, including earbuds. We dealt very little, I don't think I dealt with all of it, smartwatches, but we did have some earbuds that we had to follow. That policy is, I mean, we meet as an administration every week, and cellphones is usually something we talk about. We felt like we're fairly consistent as far as, you know, someone has one, has a phone out, we hand them the envelope, the envelope goes to the office, and then we kind of follow up from there.
So you feel like at this, to this, among the staff as well as to the students, those expectations are set and like a couple times throughout the year, so it's not just at the beginning and then it tapers off?
We do, we run PBIS three times, three times a year. So we do the kickoff in the fall, we do our, when we come back from winter break, we do PBIS lessons. PBIS lessons are various things to expectations in different parts of the building, hallway expectations, how we act in the cafeteria, but also phone is a PBIS lesson. We do our last one just with sixth and seventh grade after spring break.
And the issue about lockers, you know, we had like a robust discussion about that last year. And I think just to, you know, reiterate, what I remember, the key takeaway was just that during the COVID era, kids got used to not using lockers, there's been a real cultural change. So to the extent we have some staff though who are really advocating for phones and lockers, and they seem to want backpacks and lockers because they, you know, I mean, what, where do y'all, how do you feel about that now? Is that really feasible or in enforceable?
My take on lockers, when I actually talked to, when I was in elementary at Westwood, right, we talked a lot about transitions and even going down to every minute. So every minute that you have of a day of a transition, if you lose time, that's a hundred and eighty minutes, it's three hours, right? So if we start adding minutes on to our passing time, we're going to lose, you know, two to three days right off the school year just on, on passing time. And our, one of our biggest challenges, right, is getting kids out of the hallways, right? They go to, they only have four minutes, and that's very purposeful because they move. From class to class with their backpacks. So I realized there was a time, I've, I've done middle school now for many years, eleven, thirteen, between West and East, so I've experienced different ideas as far as lockers go. But right now, what I see as far as hallway behavior, as far as transitions, appropriateness in a hallway, is it's working very well. I know there's some, there's some teachers that get frustrated with the backpacks in the classrooms. We do encourage them, we do have hooks on every desk so they, they can hook the backpack onto the desk so they're not flipping over them. And as far as safety goes, you know, we've talked about that also. We haven't had issue or don't have data to support that there's a safety issue with this backpack.
Thank you.
Having spent a little time in a middle school myself, I think, I think when you have... Having spent a little time in a middle school myself, I think, I think when you have a principal who stands up and says, I don't know how better we could have implemented kind of a controversial policy such as this, because we were all a little reluctant going into it. So I think this data speaks volume as to how well you guys implemented it. And thank you for, and we're always going to have some comments about how to improve it. And I know you guys keep your thumb on the pulse of that. So thank you for all the feedback and everything you guys do.
Thank you.
I think this is great, first year, first year, this is great. These numbers are awesome.
Thank you. No other questions? Appreciate it.
Okay.
Tough, tough act to follow.
Well, it's a little more complicated at high school, isn't it? I think, so we did this system where students were expected to check into their phones into the numbered pockets at the start of every classroom. So every room has a consistent setup. Joe and Andy's on Joe's team. We worked hard to make sure those were consistent across the board. We shared some techniques from our teachers as far as the clients, I have a phone, I don't have a phone. Our wing offices did a really outstanding job tracking kids whose parents said, now you're not taking your phone anymore to school. And those were shared with teachers so they didn't have to, like, if I didn't have a phone, I wasn't asked six times throughout the day why my phone isn't in the pocket, right? Like a kid doesn't need that. However, it was more complicated at the high school. I'll be honest, as you guys look at our data, I think you'll see that in there. Our teachers very much realize the phones are a distraction, a hundred percent. I think they would tell you, both teachers and kids, that it was better this year. This was the best year it's been in a long time. I think that was echoed. We did student focus groups, both Joe and I did. I think you guys see some feedback, we about thirty to forty of variety of different students we talked to. And then we got some feedback from our staff too. High school's complex with the scheduling. I'm not trying to like blame variables, but like we've got two hundred plus kids who come to school at Central and then leave and go to Career Tech Center and come back. We've got, you know, five hundred plus kids who drive to school every day. We've got new enrolled, we've got kids with free hours, we've got kids with work experience. We've got, it just isn't, I mean, at middle school, all in school, for the exact six periods, it's just, we don't, it's not as complex. So to remove the phone from our kids completely, I think would have been a, would be a really, really tough battle for our kids and for our parents. My kids said to me, they said, can we understand the purpose? We know it's a distraction. If you go and tell us, no, we can't have it all day, you are going to fight kids who you don't fight right now because we acknowledge it. If I just follow the rule, I get it six times throughout the day. That was a loud clear message my kids said. Our staff battled it though, there's no doubt. If kids are checking in every hour, that means every classroom teacher has to check that phone pockets every single hour. So I think you'll, you see some comments about loss of instructional time, the work that that put on our classroom teachers to do that. Some teachers are better at that because they just develop systems. Some teachers struggled with that.
I, I think you see a consistency in terms of the relevance of the phone policy among all of our teachers. The, the survey feedback that we collected was like north of ninety-three percent, like, yeah, this is an important tool. Where it's variable is the routine of having kids check phones into the pockets and then they'll like get your phones at the end of the hour. And feedback that we're receiving is like not all really great lessons start with five minutes of phone taking and attendance and then five minutes or eight minutes at the end of retrieving phones, like some lost instructional time. There was also a little bit around those cards being flipped over like, hey, I don't have my phone today, it's in my car. And, and I personally noticed like a ton of phones and very few cards being flipped in a classroom. Like towards the end of the year, and this shows up in the Westside data more so. When we were collecting it, we noticed when we were walking into the classrooms, like, hey, there is a ton of cards flipped right now. And we made the decision to like exclude the flipped cards from our data because we couldn't really substantiate the extent to which kids just feel like, realize like, oh, maybe I can just work this hustle. And the hustle is a tough spot because like at the end of the day, you're left with an option to like have that kid get referred to the office, have a conversation with the kid, more lost instructional time. Have like, run the risk of accusing a kid of having a phone when maybe they don't have it and that kind of stuff, calling home and doing that kind of stuff. And it just got a little bit muddy where at the end of the year, I think you saw a little bit of decay on that system and teachers feeling fatigue, fighting the fight. Our, on the West side, our data was like fifty-fifty. And the teachers who were really good at doing routine events to begin their classrooms were the ones who were like, this is easy. And the rest of them were like, no, not so much, we're sick of fighting kids out.
Yeah, yeah, and I, we, you know, really tried to hammer home, this isn't about an individual teacher, this is our building-wide practice. And I would say on the East side, we did, we did a lot of checks. Like I would assign two of my APs, you gotta hit every classroom on third hour that's teaching and I want, just because when they came in the room, all of a sudden it gave the teachers their support and kids noticed it, like, oh, they're doing a check, we'd count phones and we'd count kids in the room and that was our hard percentage. We didn't, I was surprised at the lack of parent pushback, to be honest. I don't know what it was like on your side. We had tons of parents who were like, take my kid's phone, good luck getting it, take it, I would love for you to take it. We had parents that we called and they told me, told us, our kid doesn't have a phone. I have a shoebox in probably each of my assistant principals' offices, a phone, do you guys get this too? My parents are like, my kid doesn't have that phone, I don't know whose phone that is, don't give that back to my kid. And now we have like all these phones that they would just barter with and I, I didn't, I think, I really think I maybe had one parent who threw a fit at us and really pushed back. But the number of kids who decided that I'm not going to school today, like, like, I'm not doing this, I'm not giving you my phone. I won't go to ISS and parents were like, can't get them to give it up and they would just leave for the day. Handful, a few of those kids, we knew who they were, but it was tough, those, and it was just conflict all the time around the phone.
No, I will say this, in going around to classrooms to collect the data, I, I can probably count on one, maybe two hands, the number of times I've walked into a classroom and observed kids on phones. So like to the purpose or the spirit of the policy, I actually think it's like totally working. I think we just have a little bit of work to do around that, like, what are we going to require classroom teachers to do? How do we reset that phone, if we stick with the phone caddy? How do we reset it? How do we make sure that that's meaningful? Talk about the relevance of it and sort of wiggle inside of that. But our disciplinary data is down across the board, doesn't mean that it doesn't happen sometimes. And I think like teenagers everywhere, so much of their life is reflected through the media that they, that they create and that they consume in their phone. But like those numbers fell significantly. And we don't have kids like arranging to hook up in a bathroom during an instructional period. Most of that stuff happens in passing times.
Through email, through T-Caps email.
Or, or share Google Doc, or share a Google Doc, that's the new app.
That's the new one around.
Are being creative. We had zero videoing in classrooms of instruction, zero photos of kids, zero taping of lessons that then got pushed out to be mean and shameful to kids with zero of those. So I agree with Andy, we had that across the board too. Another thing that was interesting when I talked to the students is a lot of the students said to me, I don't see my mom or dad in the morning when I go to school, right? Like I, I have two high school, now high school students and I don't see my kids a lot of mornings. And so like for them, their idea of like away for the day means like a lot of times things change or my mom wants to say, hey, good morning. Or hey, you know, like I, I was kind of like, oh, that's like, that's the reality our kids like live in, right? So I think that would be a really, I think we'd end up battling kids and parents who right now are following the procedure. That, we put a percentage in there, Joe and I did, on the comments of like, this percentage of kids had zero issues with the new policy. And it's actually, Joe and I were like, what policy have we ever like on year one enacted and had like, I think it's like in the seventies somewhere? Seventy-some percent of our kids had zero issues with it. We were like, well, that's actually not bad.
It was awesome.
So.
What is the, something about a locked phone envelopes or something? Can you explain that? I think that's the whole.
It was a storage system.
Yeah, the locks.
So a lot of my teachers said to me in their feedback, they said, we can't just trust kids to put them in their backpack or put them because then they, they go to the bathroom and they spend twenty minutes in the bathroom or forty minutes or they do the meetups. Like that really got almost eliminated from us this year. And they did not want just us to say, hey, kids, power your phone down, put it in your locker, put it in your backpack. They felt like collecting them was something that like is a lot of work but needed to happen. And there are some high schools around the country who have gone to those locked envelope systems. Kids come in, now that's a huge, there's a lot of investments on that. There's personnel time, there's finance, there's, they put them in these envelopes that they get locked and then on the way out, they can unlock the envelopes and release their phone at the end of the day.
They do it at concerts or like a party.
But that, would the idea there be to check it in in the first hour and then not get it till the end of the day? So then the kids wouldn't have it during passing times or lunch, right?
Which I think would be really, really, really tough for our kids just, that's one of the best things about our district is all the educational opportunities we have. And we treat our high schoolers like they are about ready to enter the world and they do have these schedules that, I think our campus is a little more, our campus is more fluid than yours. But Career Tech Center, when kids go and they leave and they come back is like a different thing at Central. That would be really tough for us to collect them all day.
I think I, I mean, I hear everything you're saying with the frustrations of like checking the pockets and putting the phones and where's your phone? And you've left your phone in the car because I hear it from my own kid. I think one frustrating part as a parent is hearing some of the teachers that deliver messages to the kids, like, you don't have to do this. And I think that part was more frustrating because I think if, if the message would have been like, we are not tolerating phones in the classroom, I think it would have felt more empowering to the kids, I think. And so I think, you know, because I would love to say, like to have the high school, you know, both groups come together and say, maybe, you know, is it doing away with the pockets? Is that what would be better? But having this no enforcement, I mean, no phones in the classroom type of thing. And, and so I would, I would actually love to hear that suggestion because I can only imagine how frustrating it is. My own kid does it. She's like, I just put the thing in there and tell them I don't have my phone. And I'm like, okay, you know, so I, and, and so, like, I know, like harassing her to say, I know you have your phone and then you get into this power struggle with a high school kid, like, I don't want that either for our teachers. So I guess, you know, I mean, I'm curious as to what, and this may be a bigger discussion than here tonight, but like what, um, what would be kind of your solution after we went through this year of sort of pockets, no pockets? I mean, Central's been doing the pockets for longer and.
I think we had more success with it. We also like, we really went after supporting the teachers that I knew were going to struggle with it, right? I have, this is the best part about having sixty-five teachers is you have all different personalities, right? And I have some teachers that really love creativity, love autonomy and really avoid conflict, right? And so they were kind of like, here it is, there, right? And we really said, no, this is important, here's why. We sometimes came in and co-facilitated the presentations to like all five other classes with them. And then we monitored pretty tight on it. I would say it kind of fell off a little bit the last few weeks of the school. But, um.
Just a few things going on.
I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is.
I, I don't know, like, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know that, that anything needs to change in terms of the pockets. Wes has been doing it for one year. I think anytime you implement a system that requires sixty-five end users of different personality types to enforce it, I think there's always going to be variability. That's why I spoke about relevance earlier, like I don't, I think it's hard to sell something if you don't believe in the sale yourself. But I also think like when there's sixty-five people, you're always going to encounter some people who don't really feel comfortable adulting, like saying no and like being firm like that. And, and I think it's just like figuring out who those people are, having more conversations with them, letting them know that we're going to stop by and check in and seeing if we can squeeze it incrementally in the next lab.
I will say, our people who got support and then it became more of a routine, they said to me, oh my God, thank you so much. Like my classroom is totally different and I'm like, right?
And you both feel like that? Do you feel like that too, Andy? Like that, that having that from the teachers, like that they do appreciate kind of the more cell phones put away?
Oh, absolutely. I, I mean, no one disputes that having an external authority like the board say, hey, this is the way that it is, takes it off of their plate. And they're just like, look, these people said that this is the way that it's going.
Yeah, guys.
You know what I'm saying?
It does help, yeah, it does.
It helps, it helps to talk. And then the next thing is just like, making sure that that like, that there's no wobble in, in the flywheel. Like when it gets humming, that it's going. I don't know that removing the phone caddy necessarily ensures that it's going to go super well, right? Like I, I like the idea of maybe giving it another crack, but, but also like I think we're going to be back here talking about some of those same points and that people are going to share some similar feedback around the phone caddy because it produces like a power struggle with kids that's repeatable. And I think like fundamentally, those are the tensions that exist at the end of a school year between teachers and kids.
We would say, we told our teachers that if you have somebody who turns the card over, if it's a lot, just shoot their AP an email, like just send an email. But then it was a lot of work for my assistant principals. I mean, they spent like a lot of times, the majority of their mornings, not coaching instruction, not supporting kids who are struggling, but chasing phones, right? The first call is to mom and dad, do you think your kid really has a phone here? Oh, I guarantee they have a phone there, right? I bet it's right here, here, here and here. Okay, we pulled the kid in, right, you know, and.
The, the phone. Or no way I have my kid's phone, but they have one of those other kids' burner phones.
Correct, we have a lot of double up phones.
That was what, uh, one kid, one, one visitor to my house asked if I had a broken phone that she could have so she could, uh.
Asking the president before.
Yeah, she was like, I was like, uh, no. Tell me you didn't give her one.
This is the part that I was super happy with our parents is our, like I said, our parents totally knew they were learning distractions to their kids' learning. And we had kids by the end of the year that like their plan was every day when they got to school, they checked in with their, usually they're off their AA and they put, gave them their phone. Sometimes they gave them two phones, right? We had a couple of kids who were like, oh, do I put both my phones up there? We're like, yeah, put both your phones up.
Might as well.
I have so many phones.
So I imagine, because we have these middle school students coming up who are already familiar with this policy, that this feeling is going to change when that, that first class comes in from the middle school. And a really good example, I had, I had two kids in West High School this year. One who had had this policy, the no, the, the phone full policy for what, four years? So this was his first year without the phone and he was okay. You know, he didn't love it, but he was okay. But the, the ninth grader who came in with a no phone policy at her prior school was like totally supportive of it and loved it. So, and it was no, it was not hard for her at all to follow it. So hopefully that's the case for the upcoming school years.
I think as it becomes more of a norm, it'll be less of a thing to fight against. You know, and I think Wes needs just a little more norm time.
I think we're going in the right direction. It's like any habit, right? When you want to set a habit or achieve a goal, right out of the gate, you don't typically aren't at gold star status, right? You usually say, here's where we want to get, can we get ourselves closer to that? We set less discipline, less kids texting to meet up in bathrooms, zero instructional time or pictures of teachers or recordings of students, you know, saying a wrong answer in class that then was pushed out, zero on both sides. That's an improvement on where we're going.
So I, is there anything that you all would suggest, not for us necessarily, you know, revising the policy, but just for your implementation, to ameliorate those who feel like this is difficult or even very difficult to enforce? And this was on Wes, this was from Wes' staff, you know, forty-three percent found it to be difficult or very difficult versus the fifty-seven percent who thought it was simple, easier routine. I mean, I just started wondering like, does the placement of the cell phone holder bag in the classroom matter? Whether it's in the front of the classroom, the back of the classroom? You know, should there be even two if you have to divide the traffic of students first at the beginning of class and Wes? Like, are there some implementation things that you think could even reduce the instructional time further?
I think it'd be a question worth asking some of our staff. I don't know that we collected that feedback from them and that, but it's a reasonable follow-up question. I know we have a lot of varied classrooms where the caddy just wasn't an easy fit, like, like science classrooms, right? Where they have all this lab space and so we had to get like these male divider things that they slip the phone into. So I don't, I don't know the extent to which like a couple of caddies would divide the flow and make it more efficient or how much of it actually traces back to that, not really wanting to have conflict with kids every day. My, my, my guess is that it's all of the above.
And, and I'm also curious if they recognize the trade-off that now they might have to monitor the phones at the beginning of the classroom time, but they're not having to monitor the classroom throughout the entire hour like they did before.
I think providing our staff with some time, like even throughout the year to check back in and brainstorm with each other, right? One of the best things that we did was Paige Paul, who was an outstanding educator, she got up at a staff meeting, she showed everyone her system and she's just, it was like everyone in the room was like. She got up at a staff meeting, she showed everyone her system, and she's just, it was like everyone in the room was like, oh, that's a great system, right? And so some people like either replicated or adjusted it to work in their room. And all of a sudden, she gave them tips that like, you know, I, I don't currently teach and run five classes of thirty-three through my room, right? And that was helpful too. So I think providing some space for them to swap secrets and, you know, tips and stuff like that would be helpful.
Um, lastly, there were a couple of comments, both at middle school and the high schools from the staff, about requests for using phones for instructional purposes, educational purposes. And I believe the way we landed on that with our policy was based on your input as administrators. You didn't wanna have to adjudicate that. Um, how do you feel about that now? The same or perhaps differently?
The examples were like a tuning app for instruments and, right, are we thinking about this in comments?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we just went through and I talked to my teachers who used it for instructional purposes, like cameras. We've got enough cameras for photography, the tuning, my band director put it in order. And we just kind of covered those under some budget Joe and I have that was, didn't come out of their music department budget, right? We felt like it wasn't fair. They're like, hey, now you need to, you wanna purchase twenty-five tuners because you used to have used their cellphone apps. And we only gave you X dollars this year and it's gonna come out of there. We tried to, you know, appease some of that. I, I just think it's a rabbit hole. It's really easy for you to do one thing on your phone and before you know it, you're doing something else. And like, at the end of the day, we know that these are designed to be addictive, right? Like, and they're super addictive for our kids. So like, the intention is good. I just went here to do this. And then before you know it, they're down the rabbit hole of Snapchat.
Seventeen pictures of their face.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I said earlier when the middle, when I saw the West Middle School data, I wasn't surprised by that. I'm, I'm not surprised by this. I was a, I was a proponent of a way for the day for the high school as well as the middle school. That being said, um, I mean, I think providing that autonomy and a little bit of, uh, early adulting uh, for those kids is, is a good thing. Um, and I think that, you know, the seventy-nine to seventy-two percent, I mean, we would have been naive to think that this was gonna be perfect year one. So, um, you know, it's, like you said, it's a, it's an addiction. I remember Jay Berger gave his public comment last summer when we did this and talked about smoking in schools. Um, and you know how bad when we, when we did that the first year, uh, it was a huge uproar. And I mean, I think that eventually, um, hopefully this will become less of a addictive issue during school time. Um, we'll see what happens, but I think we've made a lot of progress. So I think we'll continue to make progress.
I also think it's important for adulting. I like that you mentioned that because, you know, how many of us are not really allowed to be looking at our phones all throughout the day at work? It's not really a good practice of, unless that's your job, but I don't want them to, make them think that's real life.
So thank you, honey.
With you for the seven minutes.
Thank you, thank you for all of you, you know, really setting the tone in your buildings. Because, you know, we're the board and we, you know, you can always point to us and we're that big scared nebulous body. But really, you're the people on the ground who make it happen. And, and so your leadership is critical and you've helped the great worst.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
I think we can good to summarize that we're not, so good to continue next this. And hopefully we see some improvements.
Further implementation.
After the, after the discussions, we'll be good.
And feel free to call Dylan Moore out in class.
Oh, boy. Man.
Not listening, it's okay.
Okay, one more.
That's hilarious.
Um, I have a long superintendent's report tonight. Um, we have a required twenty-three, twenty-four state benchmark assessment reporting. Um, we did do this as well in the curriculum committee, um, so that was, uh, covered and passed on. But we have to do this, um, under requirement. You will remember, we do not have all of our assessment, all of our secondary, the SSAT. It still will be coming later. Um, so this is just a smaller snapshot of the NWA benchmark assessment data. Um, so I'll pass it off to Kristen Wuher, I will, uh, say, so recently married. And so that is her name now. So, um, I, uh, I walked in today, I said, okay, what is it? And this is it. So we're learning it, you know? And, uh, and Heidi Skodek as well is here. So, uh, I'll pass it off to Kristen, and away we go.
Okay, so the first, um, slide that you're looking at would, would be, um,
Title slide.
Would be the title slide. Here we go. So the first slide that you're looking at is looking at, um, NWA growth for this year only. So if you recall back from our board study session, we talked about this thing called a RIT score. And the RIT score really projects, so when the students take the baseline assessment in the fall, they get their RIT score. Based on that RIT score, NWA then norms out how much growth each student should make. So in theory, we would love to see a hundred percent of our kids, regardless of where they started, grow, um, that projected RIT. So what this graph is indicating, um, the blue indicates the ELA RIT growth by building. So these are building averages. The red represents growth in math by building. And the very last, uh, column you see is the district average in both reading and math for that RIT score from fall to spring. So the next slide, really, um, what I wanna call your attention to is this is historical data. So this is looking at that growth over time from fall to spring. That top subset of numbers represents ELA. The bottom subset of numbers represents math. That top blue line is from two thousand and eighteen. So that's our pre-COVID kind of marker. So you can see that in ELA, um, in two thousand and eighteen, we had that fifty-six point six-three percent of our students, again, this is kindergarten through eighth grade, met that RIT score in ELA. The bottom green line represents this year. So in ELA, we had forty-nine percent of our students that hit that growth score. Compare that to math. So when you look at math, you see in that, that bright blue line, which again represents pre-COVID, that's at fifty-nine percent or fifty-nine point eleven percent in two thousand and eighteen. This year, math, um, in terms of growth, students, we had sixty-five percent of their students that either met or exceeded that projected RIT. If you compare that to last year, we saw about sixty-five, six, or fifteen percent increase of students that met or exceeded that RIT score in mathematics. All buildings saw more gains in growth in math than in language arts. And again, if you think back to our board study session, we spent quite a bit of time talking about some of the concerns we have related to language arts instruction in, um, in particular. Um, and I think that you're gonna see that bearing out when we move to our next graph, which is really talking about proficiency. When we think of NWA, we're really looking at kids that score at or above the sixtieth percentile. That's what we're using to indicate proficiency. So, um, what is, um, of note in this graph? And again, this really is just looking at spring proficiency. So where do kids land? Um, you will note that we had ten out of eleven of our elementary buildings showed more proficiency in math than ELA. Our two middle schools still had language art, slightly outperforming math. And then if we look historically at that next slide, again, that bright, um, blue line really indicates, um, two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. So that's that pre-COVID line. So that top subset of numbers is ELA. And if you look at, um, pre-COVID, we had about sixty percent of our students that were scoring at or above the sixtieth percentile. This year, we are again very much stagnant hovering right around that fifty-one percentage, um, point. So we have about fifty-one percent of our students in language arts that are scoring at or above the sixtieth percentile. Again, if you look conversely with math, you'll see that, um, again, pre-COVID, we were at fifty-six point five-three percent. We're not quite to that pre-COVID level, but we have made some very significant rebound in the area of mathematics in particular. And actually, for the first time in five years, math proficiency overall has exceeded language arts. That's a very quick summary of kind of, um, overall averages in relationship to NWA.
Yeah, so what do you attribute the large increase in the math proficiency compared to the ELA? Like, was it a new curriculum at some level?
I think there are a couple of things at play. Um, one would be that NWA, the actual assessment itself, did alter the algorithm of, of how kids are being assessed within grade level bands. So, um, we did expect to see better scores in mathematics based on that slight switch to NWA. Um, but I also think it's indicative of the fact that our, our program, um, we, we did adopt a new math program. We've spent a lot of time, I think, thinking very critically about what curriculum, um, is best aligned to how kids learn mathematically. And I think Heidi can speak even more to, actually, uh, the data that we got from our CMP pilot at the middle school level was very compelling in terms of growth. Um, so I, I do think it's, it's an alignment. Um, it's an emphasis on, um, making sure that the instruction is, um, is matching where kids are at. And, and I also think quite honestly, we have a ways to go in mathematics too, right? I don't think we're, we're satisfied saying that, that we've hit the mark. We just know that we're trending in the right direction.
Any questions?
No? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Heidi, we'll talk now about the, um, ninety-eight B learning goal of report.
And so, um, it was the, at our curriculum meeting, it was actually great to be talking about science and the math adoption at the same time or, or modification to our adoption of CPM because we actually got into a little bit more of the details around the importance of, um, the learning that takes place of students that were not accelerated. But this report does show that there was significant growth in math across the board. Um, and we have the information from NWA that the change in the algorithm really was related to aligning to grade level standards. So in that alignment, really, when you're taking the NWA, it's doing two things. It's looking at the student's RIT score when they start. And then it's also giving them questions based on that and then making adjustments based on how the student responds. So if the adjustment was based on grade level standards, you can imagine we're gonna see kind of that correction taking place. And you'll probably continue to see it through next year, year for the math piece. Um, in the ninety-eight, um, in the ninety-eight B report, it is, it was interesting for me to look at the subgroup categories. And so that was where I spent a little bit of time looking at, um, areas of improvement that could be made and maybe focus areas in the future. Our American Indian and Black students both observed, observed overall growth in math and ELA, which was a win for us, for sure. ELA or EL students, English learners, observe, we observe declines in both ELA and math. So that's an area of focus for us to look at. Um, one of the things to note is that our ELs, English learner students, many times are coming in at a lower level when they start. So that probably has had some impact on our scores for our EL students overall. Um, uh, one thing I'd highlight is, uh, Westward would saw growth in every grade level math and ELA this year. So, um, that was one thing we wanted to, um, highlight as well. And a focus area for middle school, um, certainly is, would be ELA where we spend some time looking at. Um, then remember, we also have some other metrics that we look at and some scores that aren't in. So our PSAT, SAT scores aren't in yet. Um, but our graduation rates are another thing we look at in particular to Traverse City High School. And so our graduation wait, rates actually went up for the four-year, went down for percentage for the fifth year, and went up for the sixth year. And so, um, part of our-
So those are cohorts, four-year, five-year, six-years to graduate?
You got it.
So, kidney.
And so one of our conversations in board curriculum was really around, um, some new and innovative things we're hoping to do with TC High that actually could probably, um, push this in the right direction as well. How are we offering credit? How are students earning credit? And how are we supporting their growth in a way that gets them to the finish line in, um, a more timely manner? So you'll see more coming on that piece. Um, but overall, um, today, for example, I sat with the elementary math people and went over the NWA scores. So usually the question comes in, what do we do next, right? After we see these scores, what happens next? We know this is only one set of data. We always try to look at multiple points of data before we make determinations. But for example, the elementary math, um, leadership team took these scores and looked at where they were at related to math by grade level. And then, um, reviewed the same information that they had in previous years to look at, did we make improvements? Where is our area of focus? And so their area of focus is, um, really on math fluency for next year, based on some of the things that they saw here, as well as looking at, um, how to support tier-two instruction in math. And so, um, lots of great conversations. So when we see one set of data like this, like this report, it's only one point. We certainly take it back to our leadership teams and our teachers to look at, to review, to make, um, educated decisions on what our next steps might be. When, once we get our M-step data coming back in, those scores will also be something that we look at as a data point to look at where we go for our next moves on data. But this is the required state report that we do each year. It gives us a good reflection point. And NWA is given three times a year, so we have a beginning, mid, and endpoint data point for our students.
I just wanted to, um, take a look at the TC High School graduation rate, um, data. Because that was, that's one of the district goals, was to increase by two percent.
Yes.
Compared to the prior school year. So there's actually the breakdown on the last page of the packet, um, where you have the four-year, five-year, and six-years. So it looks like four-year rate went up by almost three percentage points. But then there was a big drop in the five-year rate from fifty-nine percent to thirty-seven point five. Um, so that's like about twenty-two percent drop.
Mm-hmm.
And then the, and then the six-year rate went up. I mean, it was almost the same. So overall, did the TC High School graduation rate increase by two percent?
It did not increase by two percent last year.
Overall.
It did not. And that, that prompts, um, some of our work that you'll hear about in next board curriculum meeting, which eventually will come to the full board to talk about how we support those learners in different ways, um, that we, that other schools are seeing have impact directly on graduation rates as well as credit earning opportunities. Um, that certainly, um, we spent quite a bit of time digging into and spending time on the revisioning of TC High with the teachers and the staff around that conversation about graduation rates and what our next steps might be. Um, you'll hear more about that, opportunities for, um, uh, online learning in a different way, as well as, um, what that could look like as far as credit earning for the TC High students.
We don't actually have the twenty-three, twenty-four graduation.
Right, we won't have it.
I actually do expect it to go up, if you remember, those, where there were quite a bit of kids were on stage.
Yes.
You know, um, so, but, but we also have some thoughts. I mean, there are kids that are in other programs, you know, that have many alternative highs, the graduation amount of credits is less. We definitely have had a lot of conversation on that, I think it's a direction. But with some other opportunities added, job internships, you know, those kind of things that are some real life skill kind of opportunities for the, the kids at TC High. So our plan is next month to bring that conversation of some of the, the things we, we worked with the staff and wanna do for the fall at TC High going in that we think will continue to make a dent on those numbers.
Those, those classes are, the sizes are relatively small, so it, it doesn't take much to skew a percentage.
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly, and, and we went to visit, um, schools that are having success and visited different types of programs, um, to see where we could head next. Um, it's a conversation- It's a conversation for sure, because the goal any educator is to not only help the kid get a rest and finish line to get their degree, but to make sure they have a path after high school. It's not necessarily the diploma piece. It's about, are you ready and prepared, and do you have opportunities when you need to? That's the most important thing.
Truly career and college trends.
Yes.
We have, like, we have flexibility.
We do.
Graduation.
We do. There's a state minimum requirement. We exceed that currently. So we do have that flexibility and we would there. But, you know, we, there's a lot of, lot of conversation about, well, making the formal part last to make the informal part more. You know, with some of those things. That's our conversation. Correct.
And I apologize if you already said this, but did you say the PSAT and SAT data will be available in this meeting as well?
No, when we come in the fall. Yeah, that will be then, right, I mean, they embargo everything once we're in the, until usually August, July, actually July. We'll get embargo data in July, and then we'll be able to talk about it early in September.
Okay. So the goals that were related to the growth and proficiency in ELA and math on the PSAT and SAT, that you, that year-end data you won't have until fall?
I know they have, and quite frankly, the state that makes this report out on K eight, we like to include this because we go back and revisit it once those scores are added.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Start off from my superintendent's.
Definitely later than, I think the rest. Looks like a lot of pages, but I know there's a lot of those. It's gonna be okay. All right, moving on to board committee report outs.
Great. So we had our last curriculum committee meeting on May twenty-eighth. No public comment, moved right into procedural items. No updates or changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four district course catalog. So the next procedural item was English Language Arts K through five Curriculum Pilot Team. So the ELA Leadership and Selection Team made the decision to pilot the Core Knowledge Language Arts, or otherwise CKLA, curriculum. The material cost associated with this recommendation is eighty-two thousand three eighty-two, which includes a ten percent contingency to account for student fluctuations and funding using the Curriculum Department budget. If approved, twenty-two teachers, two from each TCAP's elementary building, will pilot the curriculum during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And there are two versions of the CKLA, the twenty-two version, which will be piloted in the fall of twenty-four, and then the twenty-twenty-five version, which will be piloted in the winter of twenty-five. So this was moved to the consent calendar. Second item was Science Middle School Curriculum Extension. So Ms. Skodak introduced Heather Wares, who's a science teacher at West Middle. The district's middle school science leaders and staff are recommending a two-year extension of the current Elevate Science Curriculum. The original adoption was implemented in twenty-eighteen with the contract ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. This was a six-year contract, which included a two-year extension with Sabas. Sabas, okay. The district has seen a ten percent increase in science scores in the middle school, and students like the curriculum. The material cost associated with the recommendation is one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred and five. This amount includes a ten percent contingency, and this has been added to the consent calendar for tonight. The next item was Math Middle School Conversion. Ms. Skodak introduced Jane Porack, who's a math teacher at East Middle School, and Maria Taplin, who's a math teacher at West Middle. The secondary math leadership team is recommending exchanging the district's current core connections for Inspiring Connections in all non-accelerated courses. Last year, seven sixth-grade middle school classrooms piloted the Inspiring Connections Curriculum. The curriculum demonstrated the ability to meet the diverse needs of students, aligned well with engagement strategies, and offered a more tailored approach to instruction. Its lower reading level ensured easier access to content for general education and special education students, along with incorporation of social and emotional learning elements. During the pilot, students were engaged, and their NWEA scores reflected significant growth from the previous school year. The material cost associated with this recommendation is one hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six. This amount includes a ten percent contingency. And again, it was recommended to move to the consent calendar tonight. We already talked about the state benchmarking for end of the year. Then we moved on to informational items, our Board Curriculum Learning Series. This is, kind of touches on what Ms. Skodak was talking about. We presented, she presented on early middle college for Traverse City High School. So she introduced, I'm sorry, Heidi, Ms. Skodak, introduced Lisa Nagy, who's a teacher at Traverse City High School. And she had two students with her, Jasmine Jackson and Natalia Sullivan. Actually, we got to see them walk across the stage at graduation, both of those students. The early middle school college experience offered the students the opportunity to work on time management, motivation, learning theory, science of learning, and exercise health. The students reported that the classes were fun and engaging and prepared them for what college will be like. Each student was taken through the entire college process, the application, orientation, registration, and the class. The program proved successful with the majority passing with a high GPA. All students participating either enrolled as a dual-enrolled student for the, or as a full-time student, NMC student in the fall. So that was a great presentation and another thing that Traverse City High School is doing to kind of help kids get prepared for either college or career. And then we had lots of celebrations and successes. I'll try to move quickly through these. Class of twenty-twenty-four honors convocations at both West and Central. That's always a highlight to see the kids. Another highlight is the West and Central, well, graduation. But the West and Central had a trip to the Capitol in Lansing. Junior's Honor Society had an induction at TCAP's Montessori. There's a new therapy dog at East that visits East and West Middle Schools named McKinley. East Middle School had a mentoring program for fifth into sixth grade Traverse Heights students. Traverse Heights Teach for America grant to fund a parenting program next year. Blair's fifth graders were honored by the TC Optimist Club. There was a family night at Cherry Knoll Elementary. There was an ELA Intervention Training Day. There was an instructional, instructional coaches retirement celebration for Tracy Westerman, who was here earlier. And then four staff members who received the Northwest Ed's Outstanding Educator Award. And again, the committee congratulate Ms. Prokowski on her new position as Superintendent of Grand Haven Area Public Schools. So this will be her last full general board meeting. So we thanked her for her dedication to TCAP's and students and staff. And yeah, will be greatly missed. So other than that, we adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, here in this room, eight-thirty, which is a Tuesday. Did I say that correctly? So any questions? Sorry, I was really trying to
You didn't go.
Go pretty quick.
All right, there are no questions. Finance and operations, pointing out by trustee.
All right, I will also try to be quick. So we met on Thursday, May thirtieth at eight fifteen. There were no public comments, so we moved into our procedural items, which were our prior committee meeting minutes. Those remained as posted. There were no changes. We then had three curriculum bid purchases services, which trustee Moonmore just mentioned. So I'll just mention where the funding is coming from for those. So for the English Language Arts Curriculum, that eighty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars is coming from the Curriculum Department budget. It's on the consent calendar. The Middle School Math CPM Educational Program is coming, is one hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's being funded from ESER curriculum funds. And then the Middle School Science purchase for one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and five dollars is being funded from both ESER funds and curriculum funds. So those all came through curriculum to finance, or on this evening's consent agenda. On this evening's discussion agenda is a technology purchase for a system-wide phone system. So the current phone system from Mitel is about a little over eleven years old. It's becoming more obsolete by the day. So the new purchase is from people-driven technology. It's nine hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. That does include a ten percent contingency. We went into pretty lengthy discussion at the Finance Committee meeting just about all the, you know, neat things that go along with it. They're, you know, being able to have them tied to personal phones, I believe, a lot of security things that go into it. We didn't have any issues with it, but we put it on the discussion for this evening, just in case anyone else wanted to comment on it, just due to the size and scope. So that's the reason that's on discussion this evening. The next item, we went on to just our informational capital project update that we discuss every month. Currently, we have the two Centers for Innovation and Manufacturing going on at West and Central High School. And then the print shop relocation, Dr. Van Wagner mentioned closing later this month for former properties. So print shop is relocating to Saban. We then had a finance update, really just all related to the budget, which we've already discussed this evening in our budget hearing. There were no other items. The minutes reflect that our next meeting is June twenty-seventh. I believe that meeting has been canceled just due to agenda items. So the next meeting is going to be, I'm not sure of the date, but it's the last Thursday in July. At eight fifteen.
Thirty-first.
The last day of July.
I'm sorry.
No, it's, it would be August first.
It's August first, sorry. I forgot we were Thursdays.
First Thursday in August.
Thought we lucked.
Check the website. All right, any questions?
All right, reporting out from Board Executive Committee on HR, staffing is in a good place on the instructional side. Obviously, we still have some open positions that we're looking for in, in some other areas. And we have, with Kristen leaving us, we have posted that position with the new title of Chief Academic Officer and some modifications to that position. Onto communications, I won't duplicate anything we covered before. I think one of the clarifications I added in that meeting, but to clarify to the full board, is we have done some bond communication updates. We're allowed to do bond communication updates, but they're extremely factual, not advocating for passing or anything like that. There is a separate group unrelated to TCAP's that has been established that they, the TCAP's YES Committee, they are completely independent. We have no guidance. We, I have asked as a courtesy if they could let us know what they're talking about, but that's just sheerly a courtesy and may or may not come. So if you hear anything, that's why. I mean, it is not actually related to us. We did cover extensively the student support network. We'll talk about that again. I will mention it just because it is so important. It was a quick meeting, so we adjourned at three thirty-two. And the next board committee meeting, is that right?
Yeah.
Is June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, at four PM in this room. Any questions on that? Moving on to board office hours, May twenty-third, pointing out to trustee.
At one visitor, and that was Bill Weisner. And he pointed out that he thought there was some disparity in some of the titles between the school libraries, in particular, the high school libraries, that he felt that disproportionately, there were some books and some topics that there were a lot more books about than there were others. So I would recommend that we consider looking into the book selection, deselection policies of the libraries.
I think we leave that up to our librarians.
We do, but it would be good for the board to know kind of how that works.
Well, that is
As it is public.
It is on a discussion item anyway for policies. Feel free, but there is obviously, we don't have a policy update.
Do a discussion now.
Yeah.
Right, that was it? Quick, yes?
That was it.
All right, and then moving on to board office hours, the next board office hours, June twenty-seventh. Thursday, Horizon Books Upper Level, trustee Humphries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to through the consent calendar as presented?
I move the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented and without discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, school safety update, deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, one update for you. One critical aspect of crisis response is the reunification of students with their parents or guardians. TCAP's has adopted the standard reunification method, also known as SRM, which provides school and district safety teams with proven methods for planning, practicing, and achieving a successful reunification. TCAP's administration and student volunteers from around the district will this summer be participating in their second mock reunification event. That'll happen over the next few weeks to continue boosting professional development centered around safe and secure school. So doing some of those practice things that you hope you don't have to do, but we are actually doing those reenactment kind of things. And so we will have our next one over the next couple of weeks, so.
It's actually Thursday.
Um, it is Yes.
Same perfect place for it.
All right. And any other questions on school safety? Moving on to bid services, I know we've already covered. The reason this is on the discussion item for the purchase of a new phone system.
Yeah, so you, the, again, the finance committee had the opportunity here. This, this does allow us to upgrade that to all the newest technologies, and including has some safety and security thing that allows us to be on our own network versus a consortium. So that we, you know, really drive our own destiny and what that looks like and the connectedness. You know, if there are any issues or those kind of things that can happen from multiple entities being on the same thing and who has, you know, authority to be able to get into those systems and things. This is just one of the steps that we know is something recommended as we continue to look at bolstering all of our security systems. You may remember when we had our, our network disruption, that phones being on, you know, were an issue. And this was one thing that we're looking at to try and further bolster that and have a little bit more control than maybe we've had in passing. And again, it's, it is an outdated system. You know, the, if I'm trying to remember, how long did Evan say?
Eleven years we had the other system.
And like recommended even like seven, I think he said, something like that? So we've gotten more than our life out of it, but again, over a decade, you can imagine a lot of the upgrades to those systems and those things, and
Does that mean any changes in technology and phone system from the last eleven years ago?
Exactly, so that's, that's where we're at.
This is completely cloud-ready, and so after we go through a whole change out of all of the actual devices, they'll work towards putting us toward the cloud, so it wouldn't prohibit us from having school if we don't have internet.
Every classroom still have a landline.
It, it's not a, it's not considered a landline because it's internet-based, but yes, every classroom has a set.
Okay.
That's a good question.
And Doug Downer still has your voicemail, your name on his voicemail.
Well, it's pretty good.
The question is, have you called anybody back?
He never checks his voicemail anyway.
Clearly.
But he will now.
I would live that the Board of Education approved the purchase of a phone system from people-driven technology for a total amount to exceed nine hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. That does include a ten percent contingency and is funded from capital bonds technology allocation.
I second.
I think Erica got it. Stacy, please conduct a roll call.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yeah.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
And trustee Newman.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the next discussion item, the adoption, adopting resolution to amend the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. Moving on to the next discussion item, the adoption, adopting resolution to amend the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. I would defer, but I think we've kind of covered it, so unless there are, the next few items, unless there are questions we feel free to ask, I will also accept a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution to approve the second amendment to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four general fund budget and the second amendment to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four special revenue fund budget dated June tenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Ms. Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Bale?
Yes, motion carries. The next discussion item is a resolution for the certification of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax levy. Again, it was in the budget presentation. If there are any questions, otherwise I can accept a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution certifying the tax levy for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year dated July first, twenty twenty four.
I second.
All right, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Newmanmore?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Was that, was it, yeah, Newmanmore?
Newmanmore?
All sorts of weird things going on.
Long day.
Okay, a resolution to approve the original twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five operating budget. Again, if there is any questions, feel free to ask, otherwise I will accept a motion.
No questions, just a comment. Thank you so much to Associate Superintendent Thomas Hill and her staff. I'm actually proposing my budget to my board next week at my job, so I know how difficult budgets are, so thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
I move to adopt a resolution to approve the original twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five general fund fund budget and the original twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five special revenue fund budget dated July first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Have you got it? Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond Bale? Raymond, oh my gosh. Trustee Raymond.
That's me.
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack? And Trustee Newman Bale?
Yes, motion carries. It's funny. Okay, moving on to the next session item, policy update and timeline. I have defer to Dr. Van Wagner, but I think I actually asked for it. Do you have anything you want to add other than?
You know, the.
We're gonna talk about.
Yeah, um, you know, the only thing is that we have talked and we kind of have a target time, you know, where we like, we think the September board meeting by would kind of be our thoughts, but that's the thought. I'll let you take it from there.
And I think we asked to put it onto the agenda. Originally, we had talked about having instruction this board meeting, passing it in July. But I think we all knew that it was going to be a really busy time around now and it's got delayed. I think everyone's okay with that, but we do want to make sure that we close it out as promptly as possible. Preferably, I would, I would suggest, yeah, I was thinking no later than October, but September was my target too.
Yeah.
What that requires from the board is is making sure that we read those policies. Scheduling time with Connie one on one, going through anything, see if she can take anything, because there are comments coming in that are easily rectified without any, any need, you know, whether it be a typo, a clarification, easy stuff. And then getting down to any policies that we have to have discussion about and then having, knowing that. So we need to get through that really quickly, so we know what we're, how many policies we're dealing with. So I would suggest if all board comments could be back by the end of July.
End of July.
End of July?
July, yeah.
Oh, okay, I was thinking June, but okay.
I mean, I'm I'm talking about board comments, meeting set, meetings done, any follow ups done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in.
I've been meeting, I've been meeting with a couple of the trustees, going through a lot of it is just phraseology different, you know, making sure the wording is consistent. Those areas, so we will make those changes in the policies as we receive them. And then if there's substantive changes, as well as been recommended by Trune, that I don't feel like I have the ability to just modify on behalf of the board upon meeting with one or more board members. Those are the ones we will highlight for discussion. So far, there's not many of those. But again, if you see those or there's areas that you want to discuss, we can certainly do that. So I know the selection of materials is one that that Beth and I have discussed. So there's just a few that are coming in that will require both of the entire board as to whether or not your recommendation is to modify.
Will you put together like maybe a list of what those will be on a discussion?
After we have everybody touch base with her.
Yeah.
And then we also will need to get feedback from Trune. Obviously, it's their policies and what, any change of ramification they may find legally with that. So that's going to take us some time to get through that.
It'll come down to the legal defensibility, so if the modifications that are being proposed would modify their defensibility, then that's something the board needs to be aware of and going into it with, you know, all information available. But right now, again, those are limited, but we will highlight those for all of you. The ones that just have typo corrections or, you know, I think Trust, or Secretary Ballinger raised the question about whether or not where it says the board will. There are some areas that may read better if it says the district will. So we're going through making those modifications, but again, it doesn't change the substance of the thing and really would bog down the entire board. Unless you want to know all those, we're just kind of using the discretion of what might change the policy as written by our legal counsel.
And so, yes, and again, this is up for comment, this is just a starting point, is we have to have these closeouts, have these discussions. And then in the August twelfth board meeting is when I would like to have, we go over any questions we have to make as a board. That would allow us to either resolve them then, probably have a couple of leftover ones that we have to kick to September. And at September, we vet, we finish it up and then pass it. If there's a particularly bad problem, we can potentially go to October, but again, I don't know if that's.
We we have the option of rescinding all but such and such policy and then, you know, adopting all but the corresponding true policy and then come back and visit it. That way, it would allow for the bulk of them to be changed and modified and give us an opportunity, if there's just maybe a couple, that there's still a sticking point for discussion rather than hold up the whole readoption process.
Well, and the other option is we could pass, as is some review.
And then come back and do a revision.
Review the other ones, which is probably where I would, I really don't want to get to a position of passing and excluding a couple because I feel like they're so tied to referencing each other that it's so much cleaner to do it one. And then come back. Next, we'll tidy up a couple of things if we have it. But I I think, I guess, however long we need, I said the end of July, maybe it's not quite the end of July, maybe it's like a week before the end of July, whatever day works for you, to make sure you're well prepared for the August twelfth board meeting, to get it out to board members ahead of time. I'm I'm not sure when's the.
August.
July, late August one.
That's, and it's also the executive committee.
So it should be.
I'm a little worried with the crunch beginningness, you know, of school or staff, everything with that. You know, I would prefer one more month kick personally, you had said October. I was thinking at the September board meeting is when to bring them. Personally, but again, this is your guys' decision, but I just know how, you know, we're going to, you know, have, you know, hopefully a chief academic officer, you know, and I just know how tight that tight is of us preparing to get ready for school there that it might be a little bit easier. We've got, we've got to hire people in the HR department. We've got a lot that could happen right then. So my preference would be September and then pass full in October, but if you can't live with that, we'll do our best to move that up.
And I think, I would say the ultimate drop dead for passing everything should be, I mean, really, I think we have to do it by December.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
By then.
But I think you get October and then that would give you November at that point to make any corrections if you did it the way you had said. Or, you know, you could take the whole enchilada on at the October meeting.
I don't, I don't think it hurts us as a board to to be a little bit shorter in our timeline.
Yeah.
Because it is summertime.
If we say, if we say the end of August and we're just going to do it the end of August anyway, so if we say the end of July. I, I would still like to get comments back by the end of July.
Time.
Okay.
Um, which is the extension of our original deadline.
Yeah, I mean, is it feasible or could it even be end of June for the July meeting? Like, I don't know how many more of, from us, for us to give you our comments, you don't think end of June, so.
Talking to board members and with everything going on.
Not for me.
I I don't, only because, I mean, getting the schedules and we're finding it's taking a little bit longer. And then, you know, so to make sure everyone's had an opportunity to to chime in, I think, by saying, you know, end of July gives ample opportunity, allows us to get them out to you for review. Then if that sparks some additional questions, we need to meet, you know, further than we we have some time. Because I think it's a much more tedious process to do in, you know, a whole board meeting versus doing our homework prior to and getting some of the research and legwork done prior to presenting them to the board.
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be a really.
Yeah.
That would be like.
So so the stack of policies is like this thick, right? But we will only get change, significant changes at the August meeting based on some board input.
Correct.
Just a very small sample.
Anything that, anything that Connie thinks is.
And I'm gonna get the whole thing back.
Anything that's a substantive change that modifies the policy substantially, other than like a just word changing, you know, things like that, we we will get to you for consideration.
So, yeah, we're probably gonna end up with ten, ten to twenty.
Page.
Policies.
Oh.
That may, and something that may be very easy of like, this is gonna change it, this is gonna change somewhat, but it, yeah, so the board needs to know it, but other than that.
Okay. For the August meeting.
For the August, so then I think we could probably look at that in August, cover any basic discussions, not really high level, don't have to get into it. And then September, we can kick off.
Try and get what we can get adapted and.
Yeah, and I would say September, we at least get, yeah, what we, so we know we're only working on five or six. We get the initial comments out of the way, maybe October, then we bring back and have the hardcore detailed. And then either we feel comfortable passing in October, we pass in October, otherwise we can push it to the November, pass in November.
Okay.
So one thing that the, our policies impact are the student handbooks. So what, what do you, how do you want to handle that for the new school year of student handbooks? Because those reflect a number of our policies.
Right, we'd have to go through once we've done a final adoption and modify the corresponding.
It's like we need to start the new school year with our existing policies.
Correct.
Because we have had to push the timeline back.
Okay. And then would we do a mid-year addendum or?
It doesn't change the substance of the handbook, it just changes the the board policy reference in the handbook.
Honey, just a quick stylistic question. So if we have comments, and I know I saw Josie's email, how do you prefer those to come to you? Because I don't want to like give you my stack of handwritten notes.
Yeah.
So what like.
This is very.
Really, yeah. What really works best is to try to schedule some time where we can sit down and think, you know, some of these are all a, are questions, like is this required, is this statutory language? We can go look up and, of course, you you know from your legal background, we can go right to the statute and say, yes, this has to be included. It's pulled word for word from from the statutory reference. And there are others that are stylistic, you know, kind of things. Trune, I think, tries very hard to keep less is more. But like, for example, Secretary Ballinger and I were talking about the reimbursement of expenses. Our current policy is a little bit more detailed, so it doesn't change, it's it's the same thing, but just maybe being a little bit more detailed in terms of what's an allowable expense. That doesn't change the substance of the policy in any way. So we can add a few things of of language, but if we're changing it entirely, some other direction, and that's something that I would want to be able to research with Trune and then refer back to the board for your discussion and ultimately decision on changing the substance of the policy.
Does that give, I think, give us the timeline and guidance everyone needs, I guess?
We'll need time, thank you.
Yep, so. Okay, moving on to property update, if there is much, I think we've covered most of it.
Okay, well, I let you know already about the closing.
Yeah.
So we're excited. Print shop is, I believe, at this point officially closed.
Starting to move equipment today.
Yep, so we are in the process and I had the chance to see Eric Christen over at Boardman a couple of days ago and they're excited for the close. I get official notice from Trune today of the date for it. So we'll go forth and and do that and excited about their plans. There's a lot of TCAPS things that they're gonna keep and incorporate into the building plans and will be really, really a neat, a neat thing that that they're doing. And then Bert the Boss, we had, I had the chance to meet with two different groups, both Scott Hardy and I, I had the chance to meet with the church that submitted the offer, New Hope Church. And great conversation, great people. They definitely, they're a very large congregation, surprised me, over three thousand members. They have a beautiful auditorium that seats almost twenty five hundred. Alcrapit actually holds their graduation there, it's a church. And they even have a drive that goes to the the east to, for people to head Calcasca and Gaylord that way. And what they look at the property for is something of an extension for daycare and the gym and opportunities. And so they definitely are interested, they're not interested in any kind of modification or any kind of deed restrictions from my conversation at all. And, but, you know, also, we're still in the very investiga- investigation stages. They have a chance to really be in the building or I did tell them that they could learn the inspection information from Acme Township and then information, and that's where we left the conversation. Then last Friday, I had the chance to meet with a group of citizens, neighbors that live around Acme. Kathleen Guy who is here, she, and a group of citizens, actually both of our speakers, had the chance and opportunity to sit and talk and I think that they're worried about any entity that would come in and just have tons of traffic, you know, just to really take away from their neighborhood. They, they really, I think, have a lot of the same spirit that was maybe initially when we did talk to Acme Township, that I think that being a little bit now more engaged and knowing all the details, I think that they would still like to see a lot of the spirit of that for the community. I mean, I think that they have a group of neighbors that are pretty driven to see if something can happen that would continue that spirit of use for that neighborhood and for kids and families, possibly fire department, you know, any of that. So they had asked if they could get a little bit of a time. You know, my thought is maybe like thirty, forty five days to try and put together a more fleshed out proposal. They, I did say that, you know, I would, I would even broach it with the board, would want some type of letter of intent, on which Kathleen did send me on Thursday, Friday, that I forwarded to the board as well, and then you also heard public comment tonight. But I think that they are very sincere and genuine in what they want. I think that they have some initial thoughts and plans. They did have also a member of the Acme Township Board at the meeting with us that definitely, he seemed very much in support of the concept they were talking as well, who's also a neighbor in that area. And so I know it's important to the board to honor the the neighborhood and that community and the best use for it when we, if we go back to the very, very beginning days of when we created RFP to put it on the market that we really didn't get a lot of response to. You know, one of the things that Matt Anderson, a former board member, I remember stressed with the board is, you know, while, yes, the money's always important to us, it it helps us do what we do with kids, the intended use of it for the community was another part of that RFP thought. And so they would like that opportunity to have just a little bit of time now and knowing kind of all of the players, everything that's transpired to see if they could put something together that would be somewhat more of a cooperative idea. I think they were open to deed restrictions and things that, you know, if something didn't work out, that it could be reverted even back to the district if its intended use isn't kept, some of that, that I think, you know. One of the things that's important to me and I think representing the board is, we don't want to end up doing something that we really regret fifteen years later that it becomes. We don't want that to happen in the neighborhood with the strife and the unfortunate, you know, things of it having to be closed and the decrease of students, you know, in that area and all that. I don't thi- I think it's important from my conversations with the board that we don't make a misstep to further, you know, and see if we can actually make make that building a plus again for that neighborhood and the kids and the people in that community. And so that's what they would like and had very good conversation on it, so that's worth that.
Is the group that you met with, is that the same group that's with the individual that has put in the offer?
No, no, so, you know, he really, you know, based on the conversation with the group that I met with, they really, he hasn't really engaged them at all. They've tried in conversation, they had said, but really. They've tried, um in conversation, they had said, but really didn't make any headway with it. Um and and they're even also, the neighbors are nervous of just one entity, you know, that controls and says they maybe do something, but maybe in error, somebody does something later, you know, and so that 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 was one of their concerns, why they like if it's somewhat more of a community group or a nonprofit or something like that, and there are those deed restrictions and things put in place that kind of protect us, that it becomes what we want, and if it doesn't, that we would have control of that destiny still, um and not have it become something that is not wanted from that standpoint, so that was the conversation.
Alright, well, there is no uh action item.
There's not at this point, I mean, there there is the, you know, the the purchase agreements that were submitted that are actually expired, but I think are still interested and headed down a path, both the individual at the six hundred thousand and New Hope Church at eight hundred thousand. I think there's still, at least on New Hope Church, I think a lot of exploratory still and all that, you know, I think they had just shared it with their congregation like the after I met with them of their potential interest.
Yep.
You know, from that standpoint, again, they had looked at cost of roofs and boilers and all that that Acme Township had put into it. Um but, you know, at this point, you do have the neighbors that are asking a slight pause for the board to give them some time, which the board would need to determine, give me some direction on what kind of time you would wanna try and give, if that's a avenue you wanted to choose, for them to try and put a proposal together that the board might consider, so that's really up to the board, but those are the conversations I had.
And I guess that's the question of the board, is if we give a formal time or if we're letting it pass today without any action, then you have at least thirty days, which is what was requested anyway.
I think that's reasonable.
Again, I, you know, I.
I don't think, I think, I think uh we also can't hold on to a, you know, public asset indefinitely. So my my message is we're not making any action at this time, but at some point we will have to, I guess it's.
We do have a carrying cost with the with the building.
Yeah, the the only thing I think in the spirit of for them is for them not to go through and do anything and then, you know, and then twenty days from now, the board have a special meeting, or, you know, you at least wanna give them to the next board meeting, then evaluate, I think that's.
Yes, yes.
That that I think is, yeah, totally acceptable, cause I I also would indicate that I think we're very interested in finding you know, what the community wants and and, you know, we're not talking large, it's a significant amount of money, but we wanna make sure it's.
And and I would expect that, you know, from the conversation, that it would be a proposal, you know, not a purchase agreement.
It's a whole policy, it's a balance.
I think, you know, they have, I, you know, in the conversation, multiple different thought philanthropy, even consideration of a November ballot initiative was in the conversation. You know, different things there from the township, so um, you know, I I they they just need some time to develop a proposal. I do not expect in thirty days, they're gonna come to you with a purchase agreement, understand?
I think the proposal.
I think it would be a proposal of what they wanna try and do and see if the board would be interested in heading down that road or not.
I think, I guess my point with the proposal is to be realistic, so I don't, you don't need to sugarcoat anything, but realistically give us a time, a a firm timeline.
Yep.
Cause that's, I think, what we need.
Yeah, I think, you know, from that standpoint, let's say, for instance, they came with a proposal of a ballot initiative in November, you're looking at December. You know, in that aspect, but that may not come to fruition, it may be more of a philanthropy-driven thing. I, you know, I think they have a lot of solid ideas in that proposal, I think they just need at least thirty days to be able to get into that, so um I think at this point, the direction you're giving me, um and, you know, Kathleen's here already, so but would be that that group has thirty days to essentially create a proposal for the board to take some consideration of and won't move forward until they that thirty days is up to possibly look at a proposal from the neighbors.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have any intention of of having any action before the next meeting, okay.
And I mean, I I would just say that I I Kathleen Guy's always been so supportive of of T cap.
Absolutely.
And and really, so I really appreciate that and and Pat Slade deal for being here as well. Um you know, the we as a board have really been put through a lot with Bert the Boss, we've had lots of offers over the last couple of years.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the Acme Township delay was, you know, hard how it ended, and so it's just, um, you know, I I agree, we we also have an obligation to a com- a community to not let it sit there um and and, you know, and put more money into it and and those kind of things. Um but I do hear what that those residents are saying, and I do wanna honor doing the right thing for those members, it's just um you know, my my gut would be like, you know, I think thirty days to kind of put together a proposal feels right for me.
Yeah.
Um just because I know we have waited a long time to make a decision and and we do have an offer um that I don't wanna, you know, scoff at that one either, I mean, I wanna be supportive of of
Yeah, I wanna be respectful to.
Yep.
that vision as well, and so um so just with that understanding that we we don't have a lot of time to kind of.
String it up.
Just drag this on.
Understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know I happily share with any party, but I know uh after the meeting, if anyone wanted to discuss what I found out with Acme on the M E D C side on funding, I'm happy to share that as well, so um I can cover that after meeting, but I would also cover that with any group who who had any interest in such a plan.
I was just gonna say.
Says the Acme Township uh resident.
What's that?
Says the Acme Township resident.
Yeah, and I'm, so I mean, I do live, every board member, I think, knows I do live in Peaceful Valley, so I'm not I've had no discussions with either groups outside of meetings, but um it is, I want what's best for the community as well, so.
I think historically, we've all, we we've been doing that, even with Boardman, I mean, we, you know.
Mm-hmm.
I think this board has been very receptive to community input and listening and doing what's best for the whole group, so.
I'd like to go that, I mean, we've we've found solutions where
Mm-hmm.
many people said there aren't any, so.
And it would sure be fine, good to find a solution.
The midnight surprise.
It'd be done.
And Boardman helps.
I think that's what Erica said, time to find a solution.
Yeah. Yeah, was definitely helpful. I was just gonna ask if you could please just make sure you do, somebody, the community group or or you both ideally um you know, meet with the Acme Township super.
We'll do.
Just to ensure that.
And there is a member of the board on their team, on their their group, he was present. Um so I think there's a direct line to the Township Board and within that group.
So there are no more surprises.
And I said that, I made that statement, I think, pretty clear, and I think Kathleen would back me up on that statement, so.
And and the church is looking at potentially also for childcare.
Yeah, and you know, and I think they've got other ideas in that element, you know, and it's a very, very big congregation, and I think that, you know, space from that standpoint. Um but again, I think that the neighbors have some worry about a lot of traffic, a lot of cars, you know, a lot from that standpoint, that um they're trying to keep a peaceful neighborhood that's quiet, so.
And it may not be firm, it sounds like that's just one idea they may have, then like that's some guidance that they
Yeah.
They they don't have a firm plan yet, they're still in the exploratory phases.
But I I do know that there is in the Traverse City area need seriously for for childcare.
Oh, yeah.
For sure. So unnamed Bert the Boss citizen group, bring it.
Yeah.
And don't delay, within thirty days.
In thirty days.
I can see that as the newbie, I know these guys.
Well, and and let me rephrase it, by by the next board meeting, I don't know how the dates fall, but by the next board meeting.
He's having, he's got a good name. Yeah.
Yeah.
Regular board.
Yeah, I was trying to, yes, with, I don't think there's gonna be any action through the next board meeting, so. Um, okay, then any other discussion? Moving on to second public comment, is there a second public comment?
No, there's not, sorry.
And I move on to closing remarks, I've mainly covered uh homework for the next several weeks is uh working through those policy updates. That is one of the most critical things we can get done, so we can close that out this year. Um and I actually don't.
Only thing I would say is Kristen, thanks for everything.
Oh, yeah.
You'll be missed, and uh, you know, I know that the board has appreciated all your work and uh, you know, um maybe we'll come down and see you in Grantham and hang out.
Business. When I finally have a house, yeah.
There you go, story, story of your like career right now, right?
There's a house for sale, it's up today.
You know, a group of applause here, thank you.
Thank you.
Help anybody west side of town.
Alright, uh with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Jackie, that's good.
I, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned.